We look for you for wisdom, guidance, and all that we do. We thank you for those who gather here in this chambers tonight to express their interests. And we just ask today that you would look over the city of South Bend and continue to bring us together and break down barriers that keep us separated. We ask that we would be able to think on things on a higher level and work together as a council to make South Bend a better place. We ask that safety and security would be throughout our cities and that you would continue to raise South Bend up to be an example and a great light for other cities across this nation. We cannot do this work without you. And we just ask that you would be invited into this work tonight and that we leave here, make this South Bend a better place. Jesus.
Thank you. At this time.
I'm trying to get this signal worked.
Here nine thanks down the row here, but Mr. Perry, thank you for your commitment and service to the city, the vision, in bringing our parks and venues to where we are today, having won this award. Thank you for being here in person to present this award to us. One thing that you didn't say and people should know is the Parks team was amazing during COVID. And so not only do they work hard in normal times, but during COVID pivoted their work to be able to provide food to members in our community. And so for that should also be commended. Thank you, Parks team.
I would also like to offer my thanks. I'm always in awe when I see your team at work. And I'm really excited for the community, for the things that are yet to come with the Morris and all of the things that we have before us that are yet to be completed. And again, just thank you.
Yes, I would just like to say, you know, congratulations, well deserved. And your team, you have a wonderful team committed, just always out there in the community, doing so much for every one of us. And I'll be looking forward to Walker Field, even though that's a little small project out there. You do keep me abreast of that project, so I'm very excited about that. But so well deserved and just congratulations.
I don't know how many thank yous we could go, but I'll give my own and just wanna, it's nice that hard work and innovation is recognized and appreciated. Thank you to the Academy for taking the time to recognize South Bend. And I look forward to the next steps, projects for South Bend Parks.
I don't want to interrupt a moment there. I just want to say to Ms. Perry and to those from the Academy, into all of the Parks and Venue staff, it does make us proud when nationally we can be recognized for the wonderful things that are happening in South Bend. I'm very grateful for what we have here. We have something very special in South Bend, and we just want to continue to do great things. And so, congratulations. Thank you very much. And again, to the staff, thank you for all your hard work and we appreciate it. And so, thank you.
It's my turn. See if I can come up with something original. Recreation is an integral to high quality of life by creating active, connected, vibrant individuals and community. Recreation is a public good and has been proven to support individual and community resilience. Sounds original? Good job. No, again, thank you guys so much for what you do. Erin, hats off to you as always. Thank you, sir, for showing up. But let's go South Bend. Looks good. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. At this time, I will ask if council, if you want to take pictures, we can come down real quick and get a picture with the award. Thanks again, council members. At this time, the special business commemorating the Thanksgiving announcement for WUBS, Councilman Davis will be sponsoring a proclamation. So on the agenda, we will be moving on past that special business. Thank you so much for the upcoming proclamation. There are no reports from the city offices. At this time, I will entertain a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole.
Second.
Clerk Jones, no? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried.
This is the committee of the whole is now in session. Thank you. Thank you. The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Thank you. So our first bill that we have is Bill 129-21. Clerk Jones, could you give the bill a second reading?
Yes. A public hearing, a public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 602 East Dayton, Council Manic District Number Three in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. This afternoon, this bill came before the zoning and annexation committee and comes before us this evening with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, may I? I have a question. I should have done this earlier, but I just didn't. Is there any way that we can move the resolutions up on the agenda, given the crowd that's here and not knowing how long this is going to take to get the people that are here already in the audience their time and then we can move on with the other business of the council?
I believe I'd have to resolve out of the committee of the whole.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I did that. I fleshed that.
It, of course, can be done by motion. Sure.
You would have to make the motion to get out of committee.
Well, what does everybody?
I would make a motion to resolve out of the committee of the whole and continue to resolutions and move those up in the order of business and then revert back to the committee of the whole.
Thank you, sir. Second.
Okay, so there has been a motion and it's been accepted to move out of the committee of the whole and move the resolutions up for all these fine people that are sitting in the forest this evening. All those in favor?
Aye. Excuse me, that one would take a roll call vote.
Oh, you do have to do a roll call vote?
Do that, yeah.
Oh. Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgotsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Okay, we're now back into regular.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. I appreciate that catch. The full council is now back in session. The resolutions, for those that may be here, for resolution number 2153, that has been tabled by the sponsor, Councilman Davis, until the December 13th meeting. So if anyone is here for that bill, that one has been tabled. So at this time, we will turn to resolution 2152. Clerk Jones?
21, 2152. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana endorsing and urging passage of Indiana legislation establishing driver cards for undocumented Indiana residents.
Thank you so much. Is there a sponsor?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
May I approach the podium?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Point of order. Would you like a committee report?
Yes, I would like the committee report. Actually, she can do it at the podium. Thank you so much. Oh, it's your committee. Yes, committee report, Councilman Wax. Thank you so much.
Bill number 2152 was heard in front of the Health and Public Safety Committee earlier today, and it was sent to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much, sponsor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a statement before we read the resolution.
Yes, can you give your name and address, please?
Sheila Nizgotsky, 4942 Scenic Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46619.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone here tonight on behalf of the driver's card resolution, Bill number 21-52. I would like to recognize the representatives from St. Adalbert's Parish, Our Lady of Hungary, and the Notre Dame students from the Indiana Driving Card Project, as well as our immigrant community, mostly of which who reside in the sixth district and throughout the city of South Bend. I also want to thank all of my co-sponsors who have also agreed to be part of this resolution today. The reason I brought this forward for tonight's hearing is because I believe it was important to the over 11,000 immigrants residing in South Bend and St. Joseph County, that we acknowledge that they too are part in our integral members of our community. They work within this community, raise their families here and purchase goods here. They also pay taxes here, just like everyone else living here. They also help South Bend to reap the economic benefits that our city enjoys when those dollars are earned and in return spent here in South Bend. But because of our federal government's procrastination in enacting good, sensible, long-term immigration policy, a good portion of our Latino and Hispanic population here in South Bend are being denied the ability to adequately care for their children and their families. Having the ability to drive to and from work, go to the grocery store, or take their children to the doctor when in need should not be an impediment, only because of the status of their citizenship. The General Assembly has been working to pass legislation over the last several years to provide a driver's record card for undocumented immigrants residing here in Indiana. This card would clearly read "for driving record only and not valid for identification." It would be used solely for the right to drive a vehicle and to legally purchase insurance. Driving records card could not be used to vote, access federal services, or claim citizenship. They would, however, be compliant with the Real Act ID of 2005. In the 2021 session in the General Assembly and the upcoming session due to begin this January, this legislation has gained bipartisan support. House and Senate members of the General Assembly have gained greater awareness through educational efforts provided by members of our Latino and Hispanic communities throughout the state of Indiana. I believe that they are a juncture of passing this very meaningful legislation. That's why I felt it was important to bring this resolution before the council this evening. Other communities throughout the state are being asked to sponsor resolutions, just like what we have before us tonight. It is our way of saying to the immigrants throughout our city that we acknowledge you and we know you are vibrant members of our community. No one should be denied the right to properly care for your children and your families by being denied to drive an automobile. It is also the matter in which the common council of the South Bend can lend its support to our legislators in order to reinforce the reality that is important, clearly an issue that has no political boundaries. It is simply the right thing to do. So my fellow council members, I would very much appreciate your support in passing this resolution before us, and I appreciate all the co-sponsors that have done so thus far. So a resolution of the common council in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Susa, would you like to come up to the podium?
I would ask at this time that the people who are speaking and co-sponsors to come up to the podium at this time.
So a resolution of the common council, city of South Bend, Indiana endorsing and urging passage of the Indiana legislation establishing driver's cards for undocumented Indiana residents. Whereas the safety of all the people using Indiana roads should be a primary consideration of elected officials in the state of Indiana. And whereas at the present time, many undocumented Indiana residents are driving on the streets and highways of Indiana without adequate training, certification, or insurance. And whereas statewide legislation providing undocumented Indiana residents with a pathway to obtain a driver's card will encourage undocumented Indiana residents to be trained, certified, and insured. And whereas earlier in 2021, Indiana House Bill 1138 and Senate Bill 319 establishing driver's cards in Indiana failed to move forward. And whereas at the present time, similar legislation has passed in 16 states, including California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Hawaii, Illinois, Maryland, New Jersey, New Mexico, New York, Nevada, Oregon, Utah, Vermont, Virginia, Washington, together with the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico. And whereas such legislation will improve public safety by requiring all undocumented residents desiring to drive legally to pass a written test of knowledge of driving laws and road signs, a vision test and a driving test. Whereas such legislation will benefit Indiana's insurance industry by reducing costs per policyholder and increasing the number of insured state residents while at the same time reducing the number of uninsured residents. And whereas the legislation will promote commerce by permitting undocumented residents desiring to drive legally to support the state of Indiana's businesses for their basic needs. And whereas such legislation will contribute to the tax revenue of the state of Indiana. And whereas such legislation will improve public safety and promote positive relations with law enforcement by reducing the fear of traffic stops and by reducing any incentive to leave the scene of the accident. And whereas a driver's card will provide an easily identifiable and distinguishable identification that will not be valid for voter identification. And whereas bipartisan legislation will again be introduced to both houses in the Indiana General Assembly to establish driver cards for undocumented residents. And whereas the common council believes that all Indiana residents should be trained, certified, and issued in order to promote public safety, a growing economy, and a positive relation with law enforcement. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section one. The South Bend Common Council hereby endorses and urges passage of the state legislation to provide a pathway for undocumented Indiana residents to be able to obtain a driver's card. Section two. The South Bend Common Council also hereby endorses and urges passage of state legislation to provide prerequisites to obtaining a driver's card such as such as training, certification, and insurance. Section 3. The South Bend Common Council urges city residents to support the passage of such legislation by making their opinions known to their state legislators.
Thank you, Councilwoman Niesgotsky.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone that also want to speak from the public? And if so, would you please state your name and address for your comments?
Father Ryan Pietrcarlo, 2505 West Gray Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. Good evening, South Bend Common Council. My name is Father Ryan Pietrcarlo, the pastor of St. Adalbert and St. Cashmere Catholic Churches here in South Bend. I am here to speak in favor of the driver's card. I'm a pastor of two predominantly Latino parishes on the west side of South Bend, and this driver's card would be of greatest importance for my community. My parishioners are very good people who are here in South Bend simply to work towards a better life for themselves and for their children. And they, like everyone else, need to do the basic things of everyday life, like take their children to school, go to work, go grocery shopping, and run errands. But often, they do so under great stress and anxiety since they do not possess the documents or something like a driver's card to make them feel at ease on the roads. Such a car would allow people like my parishioners to do their necessary tasks of everyday life in peace, so that they can support their families. South Bend is now a place blessed with many immigrants who contribute in wonderful ways to the well-being and functioning of our city. And this car is a wonderful way to support them to continue to play an important role here. The Catholic tradition that I belong to has a deep and rich social doctrine that has at its heart the precious dignity of every human being, a dignity that comes from being created by God. This dignity is not contingent on place of origin, or race, or status, but that we are all human beings made in God's image. And therefore, all humans, no matter where they live, have the right to enjoy the basic rights to be able to sustain themselves and their families and make a living. I see this driver's card as a beautiful way to show the dignity of all people here in South Bend and a way to help our most vulnerable feel more at home here, so that they can live with greater peace and know that they are fellow human beings alongside all of us who deserve the basic rights and privileges that we enjoy. I humbly implore you, South Bend Common Council, to vote yes for this driver's card tonight. I thank you for your intention, for your attention, and may God bless you always.
Thank you so much. Are there any other speakers standing in line? If so, could you come to the podium? Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Benhamin Roscongracia, and I'm a student at the University of Notre Dame, living at Bomber Hall in the University of Notre Dame. I've been working with the Indiana Driver Record Card Project for a year and a half now on, with my colleagues, Ira Sema and Emma, as well as the rest of a team of 14, and the team from St. Adalbert Social Justice Committee, led by Hesusa in the crowd, and we're taking up the previous work of students who had led this project before me, including Edward Brunicardi, Patrick Imoney, and Madeline Ward. I'm here to speak to you today to urge you to pass this resolution because we have done extensive research that shows the benefits that this type of legislation would bring not only to the undocumented community, but also to the entire state. And the main point that I want to drive home today is that when the undocumented community wins by passing this form of legislation, the entire state of Indiana wins too on multiple policy points. In reality, there really are no downsides to passing this piece of legislation, which is why you should endorse this resolution. We can look to why the undocumented community ultimately wins when everyone is trained, certified, and insured, which are the main points that I'm going to be talking about today. When all drivers are trained, Indiana benefits from public safety, as our research that we conducted has indicated that there would be significantly fewer accidents and hit-and-runs as we have found in every single other state who has passed similar legislation, such as the 16 ones that the councilwoman mentioned before. When every single person in the state is certified, it improves relations with law enforcement because they are less afraid when they know that they are driving legally. And it also saves police officers and law enforcement time because they no longer have to impound vehicles for driving illegally. When everybody is insured, insurance companies and our strong insurance industry in Indiana also become strengthened. The reason being that there will be increased policyholders, and our research itself has actually indicated that in the next three years, this legislation would increase savings and revenue for the state insurance industry by $68 million. When undocumented immigrants pay for these cards themselves, the state is actually projected to gain millions of dollars in revenue, which is especially good during COVID when the Indiana budget has become especially tight. In fact, our research has predicted that the Indiana economy would grow by up to $23 million and that the state could generate up to $17 million in revenue through direct, applied, and indirect taxes. And ultimately, and the most important one of all, when undocumented immigrants are able to drive safely to work, we strengthen our communities and we ultimately strengthen the family values that we stand here today to defend. The reason, because they're able to provide for their children, they're able to go to work, they're able to take their kids where they need to go to school, improving access to education for everybody and ultimately ensuring equal protection under the law for everybody residing in the United States, and ability to access basic needs. So for all these reasons today, I urge the Common Council of South Bend to pass this resolution endorsing the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Emma Ryan, and I live in 205 McGlin Hall in Notre Dame, Indiana. Thank you all so much for allowing us to be here today. My name is Emma. I'm a student for the Indiana Driving Privilege Card Project, and I'm also a co-lead that has been working on this project for a year now. In working with the population here, and working with legislators, and working with other stakeholders, we have learned that this bill not only will affect just the undocumented population here, but will affect everyone in Indiana. Right here in South Bend, with such a high immigrant population, there are children that cannot get to school properly. There are children that struggle to get to their daily, to get to school activities. And there are people who are for everyday tasks. It is a stressful and difficult thing to accomplish. And what we want here to show, and we want to start here, is to show that in South Bend and in all of Indiana, we care about this population. We care about the immigrants in our communities, and we want to make their lives better, and we want to support them throughout Indiana. Let's pass this resolution so that we can get children into schools, so that we can allow children to participate in sports. We want to pass this resolution to allow people all across Indiana to have safer, less stressful, and easier lives. Through the passage of this resolution here, we will set an example, just in South Bend, but for all of Indiana, that we want to support this bill on a statewide level, and we want to support our immigrants and our community across the state. So passing this resolution here will be a very, very important talking point for us when we're speaking with legislators, when we're speaking with stakeholders, and when we're speaking with businesses across the state and trying to pass this bill. It will be very important because it will show that one of the biggest cities in Indiana supports this bill and that there is community support from all sides of Indiana, not just from the immigrant population, but from everyone in Indiana, because everyone understands the importance of this bill. So thank you all so much for taking the time to speak with us today, for taking the time to listen to this resolution, and to understand that we care about the people in our community, and we want to make their lives better in every possible way.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please state your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ira Sema. I am from 128 Ryan Hall, Notre Dame. I'm also one of the co-leads for the Indiana Driving Record Privilege Card, Indiana Driving Record Card Project, and I'm just here to emphasize the commitment we've had for our community. We have talked to so many different individuals from all over the state, business leaders, community advocates, nonprofits, and all thousands and thousands of individuals. And here's a testimony for yourself that these individuals coming even from Plymouth have come all the way here to show their support because it's a matter that impacts everybody. When we think of everybody, we think of mixed families, because mixed families are everybody. We are just so grateful for the opportunity to be up here and to really, really show how important this is to help everybody, including everybody in this room now. So thank you so much, and I really, really encourage that you guys consider this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have another speaker. Would you please come to the podium and state your name and address, please?
Good night. Yo voy a hablar en español.
She says she's going to speak in Spanish?
Mi nombre es Yadira Sanchez.
Her name is Yadira Sanchez.
Mi dirección es 23 19 East 400 Warsaw.
She resides at 2319 East 400 South in Warsaw?
Pues yo estoy aquí con enfrente de ustedes para nuestra comunidad hispana de Indiana.
She says she is in front of you on behalf of the Hispanic community from Indiana?
Porque nuestro pueblo necesita la licencia de conducir para poder salir a nuestras calles, para que no tengan miedo, temor, para poder regresar a sus casas. El miedo no es como salir porque van manejando, sino cuando llega el policía y no tiene el documento, entonces ellos ya tienen en su mente que los van a arrestar. Sus familias...
So she says that she is talking about how the person that we driving without a driving card or a driving's license would be, have this fear in this, not because they are driving, but they perhaps could look behind them and see the police, and maybe they have a fear of being arrested or deported?
Hay madres que son solteras, es mamá y papá. Tienen sus bebés con baby sitter, entonces...
And then they have their children at babysitters?
Y no regresan a casa.
And if they do not return to pick up their children?
Ahí está el problema. ¿Qué pasa con los babies si no tienen la licencia de conducir?
What happens to those babies just because the parents don't have a driving card or license?
Aquí enfrente de ustedes y nuestro pueblo de Indiana, estamos muy agradecidos por escucharnos este día, esta noche.
We're very grateful that you listened to us this evening.
Pues muchas gracias, y en representación de todos nuestros compañeros.
So representing all my fellow...
Compañeros de trabajo, de pueblos.
Workers, from the same city.
También tengo mi compañero que va a unas palabras en español también.
And I also have someone that's going to speak in Spanish as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hola, mi nombre es Milton Chinchia.
Hello, my name is Milton Chinchia.
Creo que estoy representando... Oh, mi dirección es 707.
707, North Plum Street, Plymouth, Indiana, 46563.
Thank you. Creo que estoy representando a los cabezas de hogar.
I am representing the head of households.
Creo que es necesario manejar.
I think it's necessary to drive.
No es un lujo, no es algo como que... No es un lujo para... Necesitamos más que todo la licencia de manejar es para trabajar, para hacer nuestras cosas personales.
He says that to drive is not a pleasure, but it's a need. They need it to go to work and to make purchases?
Muchas veces salimos de la casa sin pensar que, o a veces pensamos si volvemos o no volvemos, o a veces volvemos con un ticket, o a veces más que un ticket.
He says sometimes we leave our homes and we don't even know how we'll return. We might have a ticket, or we might not return, or more than a ticket.
Por qué? Por el simple hecho que no tenemos un carnet de conducir.
He says, oh, why would that be? Because we don't have a driving card?
Puede ser chistoso, o no puede ser chistoso, pero a nosotros, los latinos, simple, por el simple hecho que un policía se ponga atrás del carro de nosotros, nos da pánico.
He says it might sound humorous, but for us Hispanics, if a police is behind us, we panic.
Pánico porque temor, miedo.
Fear, fear.
No porque estamos haciendo algo malo.
Not because we're doing something wrong.
Simple y llanamente el hecho porque no damos un carnet de conducir.
But we do not have a purpose, a car, a card, or driving's license.
Gracias.
He says, thank you.
Por escucharnos.
Thank you for listening.
Por la oportunidad que nos están dando.
For the opportunity that you're giving to us this time. Thank you so much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hola, mi nombre es Eva Sanchez. Yo vengo de Plymouth, Indiana, center, 7-Eleven.
Okay, her name is Eva Sanchez, from 7-Eleven, North Center Street, Plymouth, Indiana, 46563.
Yo vengo aquí representando a todos mis compañeros.
I come here representing all my fellows, countrymen.
Como madres solas.
As a single mother.
Yo no personal, no manejo, pero me sirvo de las personas que manejan.
I personally do not drive, but I do, I am serviced by people that do drive.
Quisiera que cuando me llevaran a donde yo me dirijo, ir con confianza de saber que van manejando con todo lo que requiere la ley.
And I would like just to have that assurance that when I am a passenger, that they have everything they need according to the laws, the rules.
Por qué? Yo salgo de casa, y en casa me esperan mis hijos y yo. Como todos mis compañeros, quiero regresar con una seguridad de que la persona que me lleva no lleve miedo ni temor, que lleve su... tenga sus reglamentos como la ley lo pide. Y por eso nosotros aquí, aquí todos mis compañeros, este venimos solicitando este una licencia para manejar más seguros.
So that's why she is asking that you take and consider this proposal, this resolution, because she would like to return home with that assurance that they have a driving license or a driving card.
Que tal vez aquí mira, se les hace mucha gente.
Maybe you see too many people here.
Hay más.
But there's more, so much more.
Trabajadores de restaurant.
They're working in the restaurants.
Yo trabajo en restaurant.
I work in a restaurant.
Limpio casas.
I clean homes.
Trabajo en factoría.
I work in a factory.
Necesito trasladarme.
I need to transport.
Y siempre necesito que me apoyen.
And I need someone to support me.
Y tal vez hay mucha gente queriendo apoyarme como a mí, como a todos.
And maybe there's people that want to support me, so I can support others.
Pero siempre tienen en el pensamiento que van inseguros.
But they might have in their minds that they're not assured.
Y por eso estamos aquí.
And so that's why we are here.
Okay, muchas gracias por escucharnos. Gracias por darnos esto.
Thank you for listening and giving us this opportunity.
Gracias.
Thank you. I also too, council, would like to say a few words. My name is Guermina Mencías. I reside at 1006 West Harrison Street, Plymouth, Indiana. I too, I'm a citizen from the United States. However, I transport a lot of people, but I love it. It's a service to me. But I do come before you, asking you for, to favor this resolution for people. The father of the St. Michael's Church, I believe it's St. Michael's, he spoke about dignity. And I had everything that councilwoman said, and he said, that's what I was going to say, that Indiana's going to benefit economically. They're going to have, people are going to have an insurance, have insurance. There's going to be less hit-and-runs. But I would like to say is that the people will have a dignity. You know, I've actually seen my friend, right before my eyes, get pulled over, and she had babies crying in her car. And I had to sit on the porch praying with my husband that they would let her go. And they let her go. I drove her home. However, she still, till this day, drives to work 35 minutes away every day. And she leaves some of her little girls with me to take care of. And, you know, I have to pray for her every day she leaves because she could come in, like everybody has spoken, she could be in jail one day, and she probably doesn't even have a list of who's going to take care of my girls. You know, I just would ask that you could favor this and maybe put yourself in the shoes of, she's a single mother, she has seven kids. And like I said, it's very sad, and I just ask that you favor this in Jesus's name.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, name and address, please.
Hello, council. My name is José Vialba. I reside in 1818 Carr Street, South Bend, Indiana. I live right here. I'm here presenting my Latina community from South Bend and San Bart's Church. I grew up here in the United States ever since I've been a little boy. I grew up basically in California, San Jose, California, and actually, something like this also passed back there. And I saw the changes that it actually impacts the community. It benefits, it benefits in many, many, many ways. But the things that you have to ask here yourself is like, all Latinos, they need three things to be able to survive here. They need a car, they need a cellphone, and speak the language obviously to be able to communicate. So we managed to learn the language, most of us, to communicate back and forth. The cellphone is something you could get at any store, any retail store that could give to you. A car, you could probably buy it, or somebody helps you get it all. But once you get pulled over by a police officer, they ask you a couple of questions. Once you get pulled over, identification, proof of insurance, and as well, property ownership of the vehicle. If you don't have any of those items, then they question, who, where do you possess the car? If you don't have any of those items, then they question who, where do you possess the car from. So that's, that's what we fear when they ask you those, those questions. If you don't have any of those identification, uh, informations, then you get to go to jail because they start asking for more details, or they have to research, or they have to figure out where the vehicle property is from. So that, sometimes police officers do not try to threaten, do not make fear on Latino. It's just their job that they're trying to do it. The thing is that it's our home is communication, and it goes to more question, more questions. But the thing is that if we don't have any identification with us, it does make us scared, or that makes us panic. And most of us, we just are trying to work vulnerably, trying to feed our kids, trying to feed our family, and try to find a better future. But the thing is that we don't, we're not here saying the, the system is wrong. We're just trying to put our side of our, our, our stories to, to, for you to notice that. It's just a little hype will help the community big time. And, and just probably identification will help a big time. So just thank you for giving us this time and have a wonderful day.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, name and address, please.
Good evening. Maureen Bauer, one three oh seven Sunnymead Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one five. It's honored to be here before you all this evening to speak in support of the resolution to urge the passage of driving card legislation for undocumented Hoosiers. I represent Indiana's State House District Six, and many of the conversations that you've heard today are conversations that I've had with my constituents. Allowing all immigrants access to driving cards will have a positive impact in both state and local communities. Such a law will provide a public safety benefit with safer roads and confident, informed, and insured drivers. Without a driver's license, you cannot get a car insurance. Such a law has an added economic benefit of providing a new source of revenue for auto insurance companies and to the state with more vehicles eligible to be registered. Such law will lower the number of hit-and-run accidents and reduce traffic fatalities as seen in other states who have passed such legislation. Such a law will provide for improved law enforcement, community relationships. And a greater access to transportation means more employment opportunities for that individual and a stronger labor force. I thank you for considering this resolution and urge your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Ramon Rivera. My address is two four six North Wellington Street, four six six one nine. Uh, yo estoy aquí representando a todos los padres de familia.
I'm here representing all of the, uh, the parents who have families.
Uh, creo que todos este queremos luchar por esta carta, esa tarjeta.
I believe we're all here wanting to fight for this driver's card.
Todos tenemos diferentes situaciones, el interés por esto mismo.
We all have different interests and reasons why we're fighting for this card.
En mi situación este personal.
In my personal situation.
Es porque yo tengo mis hijos que necesitan sus citas en Indianapolis en el hospital Riley.
And for me, it's because I have my kids who have to travel down to Riley to take them for appointments.
Uh, cada que yo voy, yo voy con miedo que me pare el policía.
Every time I go, I go with fear that the police is gonna pull me over.
En una ocasión me paró el policía en, en Indianapolis.
In one occasion, I got pulled over in Indianapolis.
Y fue él cuando miró a mi hijo en una situación grave.
That was then when the officer saw my son, uh, in a grave situation.
Uh, fue emergencias en el Riley Hospital.
It was an emergency at Riley Hospital.
Menitis, meningitis.
Or meningitis.
Uh, mi hijo tiene un riñón solamente.
He's got only one kidney.
Y ese es el temor de siempre que yo voy para allá.
And it's this constant fear that he's always gotta drive down to Indianapolis and not have his driver's card.
Uh, todos los padres estamos una tarjeta porque queremos regresar a casa con nuestra familia.
All of the parents serve to have a driver's card because we just wanna get home to our families.
Queremos salir adelante juntos, somos, uh, un pueblo, y yo pienso que todos estamos aquí por algo.
We all just wanna get ahead together, uh, as, as a community, uh, and we're all here together to thrive.
Cualquier padre da todo por un hijo y yo estoy aquí por ellos.
Any one of, uh, any one of our parents in our community would get everything for their kid, um, and I'm here for mine.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then Juan Constantino, uh, five eleven West Madison Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six oh one. Uh, I'm also here to speak in favor of the resolution and asking city council, uh, to support. I mean, as executive director of La Casa Vista, and for the countless numbers of families that come to the center, and are seeking support, whether it be through transportation, an Uber ride, come to an appointment, come for services, or a number of things. This council has once supported a program like the South Bend ID Program that this same group has sponsored and pillared. Uh, but identification card isn't enough. It's not enough that an officer can, can behind a family and that a family feels traumatized every time that they have to live with fear every day before they take their kids to school. Not long ago, a couple of months ago, my mom got into an accident. I'm a mixed status family. My mom is undocumented, my stepdad's undocumented. My heart sank, I left the office, drove to the scene. I felt lucky, I was there before the officers got there, so I could speak with them and at least show my identification and vouch for my mom. But I immediately thought my mom was gonna get arrested. I didn't know what was gonna happen. My youngest sibling was in the car, and he saw and witnessed that entire thing. Everything was okay, the car was insured, and a number of things happened. Uh, in terms of my older brother and I having, uh, the cars insured under our names. But it's the trauma that my youngest sibling went through, crying and wondering what was going to happen to his mom. We see the number of kids in this entire room and families that constantly have to live with that fear. Or that their parents, with all the right intentions in mind, tell them to sit back, don't move, because there's an officer behind them. Nothing against the officer, but it's the laws that are in place and the lack of a driver's card. So I urge the council to support this, um, resolution in support of this driver's card, because not only will it support our families, hopefully get us some momentum to get legislation done in Indianapolis, but it'll submit the support that this city council has for our immigrant, Latino, and Hispanic community here in the city of South Bend. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for your comments. Um, at this time, I would like to ask the audience by show of hands, everyone who is in agreement with this bill. Thank you so much. Is there anyone in the audience that are opposed? Thank you all so much. Clerk Jones, do you see anyone in the virtual audience that are, would like to speak in favor of this bill?
I don't see anyone in the virtual audience that is expressing the interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Anyone in opposition?
There is no one in opposition of this bill as well.
Thank you. I'll turn back to council for comments. We'll go back down the row. Actually, I'll start with Councilman Davis.
Oh, man, that's so unfair.
Oh, you want me to go back?
No, it's fine. Uh, um, you have to love American democracy here. And be able to protest for rights and, uh, speak your piece if you organize properly, if you go out for something. You stay in unison and unity and get what you want. Good job. I, uh, support it.
Thank you so much.
I would like to say that, uh, I sat across the table from a young man a few years ago who was Latino. And we had a discussion about, um, not being documented and, and having to, uh, live in fear and not knowing if you would, uh, be stopped by the police or taken to jail, or if ICE was gonna come and get you. And, and it really opened my eyes to the realities of what people in our community are, lives with. And so when Councilwoman Nizgowski, uh, reached out about this, I, I truly supported it because, first of all, we wanna make sure that people are, are insured and can drive and, um, and are safe. And the economic impact that this will have in our, um, in our community and our state. The numbers speak for themselves. So, uh, I also wanna comment what, uh, Councilman Davis said. It is a very impressive showing of people coming together, working together, advocating for what they believe in and what they want, and showing up and articulating that even if you have to use an interpreter. So, uh, I support it, and I'm very grateful that you all were here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wax.
I don't have much to add. I just do wanna thank everybody who took the time to come out here and, um, have your voices heard and to share with us whether you actually spoke or just came to be supportive. It's important that, in everything that we do, that people are involved in the process. And it's always nice to see when people come out and actually take part. So thank you all for coming.
Councilwoman Nizgowski.
Oh, I've, I've said quite a bit this evening, um, but I would just like to say to thank you, to everyone that's here. Thank you for coming out, and know that I support you one hundred percent. And I appreciate all the support of my fellow council members here this evening.
Councilwoman Hammond.
Thank you. Um, I would like to extend a huge welcome to, um, all of our neighbors from the sixth district and beyond, all the way to Plymouth. As I look out amongst you, I see many familiar faces from my five years of teaching at Saint Adelbert's and being a part of that parish community. And, um, I have a very large place in my heart for all of you. I wish to, um, remind all of the community that everything that we do should be to serve the greater good of not only South Bend, but the greater good of the Indiana community. And I strongly believe that this resolution and ultimately the bill that should pass in Indianapolis will do exactly that, so I am in, um, strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, Chair. My family migrated here to the United States when I was just a baby. And so for you parents who spoke in front of us today, I know the hard work that immigrant parents, um, do for their families to create a better life for themselves and for future generations. I wanna thank Councilwoman Nizgowski for bringing this resolution to us. And I wanna thank all the Notre Dame students with community partners who have done the tremendous research behind this resolution, um, to make the case so clear. It's obvious that this resolution urging this legislation makes economic, social, and safety sense. I thank you all for being here. I am proud to co-sponsor this bill and to support it. Gracias por todos.
Councilman Warner.
Thank you. Uh, I commend you. All the personal stories were very good. Uh, I, I urge you to polish those up and get them ready for the State House, uh, in, in Madam Bauer's chamber in January and February, and look forward in hearing those. Uh, I was a public defender in traffic court for a few years and had a lot of clients who not only had those fears, but had to live those fears out and ended up in jail and ended up in the courts and, uh, um, solely for the inability to get a license. Um, it, it, it's the right thing to do. Somebody early on also, uh, talked about, uh, equal protection. I think legally, uh, you know, I'm an attorney, so I look at the law. And, uh, uh, the Fourteenth Amendment states that, uh, no state can deny equal protection to a person. Not citizens, but persons. And, uh, there's courts all across the country that have, uh, determined that denying somebody a driver's ID or the right to, uh, to drive is, uh, violating the Fourteenth Amendment, the equal protection clause. So, you know, there's all kinds of reasons there that support this. And, uh, thank you all, and, uh, we'll see you in the State House in a few months.
Thank you so much. I would just like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and just say thank you for bringing this bill forward and excited to support it as well. With that, what say you, council?
I, I wanna, um, interject here. What happens next, it appears that this is gonna be, you know, fully supported by the entire council once it's, um, voted on and stamped. What is the process of this, a particular bill, um, Nizgowski, uh, Councilperson Nizgowski?
Um, well, it has not been formally filed yet for the upcoming year.
Uh-huh.
This resolution will go downstate.
Okay.
Um, as a show of support from the South Bend community.
Okay.
Um, and our legislators down there. Um, once the bill is filed and it gets assigned to the committee, which I believe will be the Transportation Committee, uh, which is Senator Kreider, um, they will have an opportunity to make those presentations at that time. It'll work its way through each of the houses, and then hopefully we'll be able to, uh, come through with a, a driver's bill for this year, for actually for next year.
Thank you for the explanation, the awesome work. I just wanted us to get that on record, what happens when we do same things downstate.
And I have a strong, I, I have faith that next year is gonna be the year.
I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
We need to call the roll. Clerk Jones.
Councilmember Wax. Councilmember Nizgowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye, sí se puede.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Before we move on with the meeting, we, we do have a long meeting, and you all are excused to leave if you have to. I just did not want you guys to sit if you were not interested. You're welcome to stay, but you also can leave. Josusa. Josusa, Josusa, did you wanna do a picture? Oh, well, hold on one second. They would like to get a group picture, so. I don't know. I think if you guys stay where you are, the council could come and stand in front of. If you guys stay where you are, we can stand in front and take it from this angle. Then we don't have a lot of movement.
Yeah, just in case somebody asks me a question. Thank you.
Counsel.
Chair. Chair, do you mind if we take a five-minute recess? Because this is not gonna work.
Have enough to.
Yeah, he just said second, so just take.
I have a, uh, motion for a five-minute recess. We will take a five-minute recess. It is eight twelve. We'll re-adjourn at eight seventeen.
Yeah, but the transition period is what the problem is.
You're welcome. You guys did a great job drafting the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Me too, too.
Thank you. I just tried to color this.
I've been fighting that battle for 18 years now between the two of them.
I'd like to call the council meeting back in order.
Make a motion to revert back to the committee of the whole.
Second. May we have the roll, please? Oh, we don't need the roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
So, do I need to read the whole? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for committee meetings and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee, where the bill was discussed, and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. And our first bill was Bill Number 129-21. So, Clerk Jones, could you please give that a second reading?
Yes. 129-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Property Located at 602 East Dayton, Council-Manag District Number Three, in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Bill 129-21 came before zoning and annexation this afternoon and comes to the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Molnar.
Good evening, counsel. Joe Molnar, zoning specialist with offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. Today before you is a rezoning at 602 Dayton from U1 Urban Neighborhood 1 to U2 Urban Neighborhood 2. I just want to clarify a few things that were set at committee, too. I might have given the impression that this was an illegally converted structure. We don't know that, and we do know in 2015, they did receive legal permits that were granted at the time. So, it's most likely that it was grandfathered, or what we call grandfathered. But it's hard to establish that that use never broke, so to do it the legal way, that's why it's happening. This where they're trying to rezone it to U2 to allow for the structure to be legalized moving forward. It was built as a single-family house that has been converted to small-scale multifamily. Here is the surrounding zoning map as it currently stands. It's immediately north of the Riley High School Athletic Field and Parking Lot. Here is images of what the house looks like today. It was the staff's opinion that rezoning the site to U2 Urban Neighborhood 2 District will allow for the structure to continue to be used as a multi-unit dwelling, which will provide sustained housing options while not drastically changing the established character of the neighborhood. And also, just for some clarification for counsel, too, in our U2 district, in the small-scale multifamily district, if it's already a single-family house, in order to expand that to multiple units, you do have to receive a special exception from counsel. So, it would have to come before you guys. I just wanted to clear that up as well. Based on the information provided to us prior to public hearing, the staff recommended the Plan Commission send it to you as a favorable recommendation, subject to acquiring the Certificate of Rental Safety from code enforcements, just to make sure that the building is up to the standards that we hope for all our residents. The Plan Commission did send it favorably with that, subject to, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. And I did see that the petitioner is still online as well.
Okay, thank you. Would the petitioner like to make any comments to the council at this time?
My name is David Loffel, 25790 Stanton Road.
Sir, are you making some comments? If you are, we can't hear you very clearly.
Oh, I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Now we can. Thank you.
Okay, I apologize. So, my name is David Loffel. I live at 25790 Stanton Road in North Liberty, Indiana. I do not have anything additional to add at this time.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move to the council members. Do you have any questions for the petitioner? Starting at this end, Councilman Davis, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No.
Councilman Lee?
No, I think we asked that in committee, so I'm good.
Councilman Wax? No?
Good as well.
Anybody? Councilwoman Hammond?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Tomas Morgan? Councilman Morgan? Okay. So, at this point, we have no questions from any of the council members. So, we will go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 129-21? Is anybody?
There's no one from the virtual public expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill 129-21.
Thank you. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one virtually expressing interest to speak in opposition of Bill 129-21.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 129-21 is now closed.
Make a motion to send 129-21 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Clarification. Is that with a subject to subject to certificate of registration with the rental safety verification program?
I believe that's in the.
I believe that's.
That's already in the recommendation.
Subject to the same recommendations as the committee.
Okay, so there has been a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion and it's been a second. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll on Bill 129-21?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 129-21 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. So, we're going to move on to the second bill, which is Bill 130-21. Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 130-21 a second reading?
It's a substitute bill.
It is a substit.
We have to accept that. We just received.
Can I have a motion to hear the substitute bill?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Now, Clerk Jones, could you please give the substitute bill 130-21 a second reading?
130-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Chapter 20, Article 8 of the South Bend Municipal Code to address truck routes through the city and the rules and regulations of trucks and large vehicles.
Thank you. Is there a committee report? I think that was my committee. Yes. That was in the Public Works and Property Vacation, and that was sent to the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation. Is the petitioner present?
Excuse me. Good evening, council members. My name is Aladeen DeRose with offices on the 12th floor of this building. And as we did this afternoon, I will handle the changes that we've made to create the substitute version. And Cara Boiles, our city engineer, will explain the purpose of the ordinance and the particulars about it. So, as you know, as the committee determined this afternoon, we made some changes and have filed a substitute bill for this evening. The council, I believe, has been given copies of the substitute showing the changes highlighted in yellow. Most of those changes are immaterial. Most of them have to do with Section 20-107, which is the official truck route. And originally, the directions, the directional, the directions of the routes were listed from east to west and from south to north. That is, does not correspond with the, with the map. And so, we changed those directions on, by suggestion, from west to east and from north to south. So, it's just on the amended portion and the directional changes. We added some languages, some language, just a few words in certain sections, and we eliminated the reference to Section 108, 20-108.1, which was deleted in the revised version. So, those are the, those were the immaterial changes. We also made a material change, in my opinion, and that was at the suggestion of Councilmember Wax, where we, where he noted that the section on liability could be construed to be, to be different from Indiana law. So, we wanted to make sure that the liability section conforms to Indiana law and so have added that change, that all liability under this ordinance is, shall be in accordance with Indiana law, and that's under Section 109-2, or Point 2, Section B, Subsection B. So, both of those sections have been amended at Councilmember Wax's suggestion. And those, those, those are the changes to the ordinance that result in the substitute version. And Cara Boiles will now present the ordinance itself, far more interesting.
Okay, thank you so much.
I don't know about that, but Cara Boiles, city engineer, 13th floor of this building. Find my presentation button on here. Good enough, we can go this way. So, a little background followed by some information on definitions and then the restrictions and regulations sections, as well as the newer permitting section, a little more explicit detail on the truck route map itself, and then any Q and A you might have for me again. The original, I'm sorry, everybody. Not sure. Bye. There we go. Going to give me. Try this. There it is.
Are you having some technical difficulty?
Little bit, but let's see. It's supposed to work now.
I'd run down and help you, but I probably wouldn't be the right person to do this.
One more time. There it is. A little bit in the way. There it is. That, that, too many little screens when you're doing all, you can hear. There we go. All right, so, original truck route established in 1986, amended once in 1988. And at that time, the amendments were simply to provide exceptions for municipal and utility vehicles, as well as authorize the marking of routes where trucks were not allowed, which would be our ability to put up no-truck signs. And since then, we've had some major city roadway improvements, complete streets, smart streets, the conversion of the two-way downtown streets, installation of various roundabouts through the city, and just overall higher volume of truck traffic in certain areas of the city, specifically over in the northwest region of the city near their airport. And so, you see the establishment of some new truck routes there. In the current ordinance, the definition of a truck is simply a vehicle with three axles or a vehicle that is over 10,000 pounds. It is missing a few necessary definitions that we have now included. We use these definitions based on our state highway system, and there's the similar definitions they follow for their permitting process, defining hazardous material, an oversized vehicle, an overweight vehicle, and a super-low vehicle. Super-low vehicles seek of a very large vehicle now weighing over 120,000 pounds. We get quite a few of those here. Our current ordinance really allow for the board to designate no-truck signs by, and it was actually by proper resolution, but didn't really provide a lot of clarity on how the board was authorized to approve truck routes. And so, this will give us some clarification, allowing the board to authorize permits, as well as designate city engineer's office to manage this process. And we do that by two different permits, one called a special trucking permit and the other a triple trailer permit. So, all of the oversized, overweight hazardous materials managed by this special trucking permit. And then the triple trailer permit, we also manage, but we take to the board for their approval. Some restrictions, clarifications. This, we make some clarifications to the number of, or the amount of deliveries that can be made by trucks in residential areas. So while we don't want to limit deliveries by trucks, we do want to keep them off of our residential streets that are narrow. So we restrict this to roadways with width less than 28 feet. And we don't want those to be accessed in this way. We also put in restrictions for inclement weather, so that it falls in line with our other ordinances in the city. And we also require that drivers now must be able to provide a copy of their permit. If they're pulled over, they have to have their bill of lading, their manifest, and, and a copy of their city permit, which was not necessarily specified originally in the ordinance. We added a permits and liability section. Again, just to designate that those permits be managed by the city engineer's office. And that would also establish permit fees. So permit fees that we, again, modeled after the end-up process and establish liability. And I know there's some discussion on that, so that the liability section would be in line with the state statutes and that we will not try to deviate from that in any way, since we are not legally allowable to. A little breakdown on the permits for the past few years. This shows you a little breakdown. We've issued this past year 13 oversized, overweight permits, eight of those being superloads. So those do make up quite a few of the permits this year. But those numbers, you can see relatively consistent, same order of magnitude every year. And that estimates for you what that might generate in terms of revenue. Proposed updates by quadrant, this is the northwest quadrant. You see the addition of some roads, Dillon Drive, Olive Road, Nipps Parkway, those are all shown in green. And also, Vorty Drive and Lathrup. So these are commonly used routes now towards the airport and of course northwest, as you go further out towards the bypass, State Road, or 3120. And just kind of cleans up areas in which we have established truck routes, but are not in this current ordinance, as they were not developed at the time. And existing are all shown in red, so that's going to highlight as well. This is in our northeast quadrant. And what you really see here is the removal of some residential areas. So the removal of the section of LaSalle. You see some changes due to smart streets and the roadway conversion. And you also see some addition of Lafayette to the south of the Transpost Center. In the southeast quadrant, basically, one round, one, one removal here of Michigan Street, moving, keeping our, our route safely moving down Main Street and avoiding our roundabout there at Chippewa. Also, then in the southwest section, you have the removal of Washington Street. So Washington Street from MLK to Olive Street, very residential in nature. So then you have the addition of these connectors there for Mead Street and that small section of Washington in order to make the connection coming from Olive Street. So in general, this, this is a update, again, to 1986, 1988. Those minor, very minor changes in 1988, in order to now reflect our current infrastructure, clarify roles and responsibility, and establish permit fees. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for Councilman Davis? We'll start here.
How often are these plans supposed to be updated?
I don't believe this ordinance specifies anything in terms of review period.
So how often, based upon your, your, your expertise, your experience, should these sorts of plans should be updated?
Well, it, it could be, I mean, there are various reasons why an ordinance would be updated. But in terms of traffic, I mean, every maximum 10 years, maybe?
Max 10?
I mean, I think that's a good ballpark for establishment of new roadways. Like I said earlier in committee, we were attempting to update this ordinance back pre-COVID. So after the conversion of the downtown one-way to two-way, we had started drafting this, these revisions in 2018, I believe.
So, okay, so I'm going to make an appeal to our council attorney. Can we put this on a timer for future councils? I mean, obviously, 10 years now is, puts me over the, over the time that I need to be here. And so, and I'm sure, you know, it's going to change. But I think that they will be responsible of, of this council to put something in there that makes sure that we update these sorts of plans, or that these plans are updated. So I think she gave us a marker of 10. I'll say maybe eight, the fist in between that window, because you have two years of planning that may go into place, because of census every 10 years. Thank you, sir. And I have a comment later on.
Okay. All right, any other councilmembers have a question? Councilman Wax?
Thank you. I'm trying to go through parts of the subsequent delivery section, I think that's subsection C. And I'm, so it has the general rules for when you could deviate off of the main truck routes. And then it says that you could continue, once you're off, you could continue for up to nine blocks. But then in the, after subsection III, or, in the last paragraph there, it says, "So long as such subsequent deliveries or pickups are within a maximum distance of one-half mile from the initial delivery or pickup location." Can, it's confusing me. Can you elaborate where it's nine blocks, where it's half a mile?
So, they're pretty comparable. Typically, a city block is approximately 20 miles. So, I'm sorry, 20 blocks, 20 blocks is a mile, sorry, 20 blocks is a mile. So nine city blocks, approximately half a mile. It, there's, there's some, it's not exact. So, so those two numbers, so that's all original language that was in the ordinance. That's not a change, that's not an update, it's just removed, it's just moved to a different location. The only verbal change there, or written change, is the second nine blocks was changed to half a mile. And so the original language said you could deviate as long as it was within nine city blocks. So you're on the truck route, you need to make a delivery, you can deviate your nine blocks, or sorry, you can make your delivery, and then you can, and then from your delivery, you can deviate a half a mile in any direction from that delivery. So you're still within that same essential radius or buffer. So you've gone nine blocks from the truck route. And now you could go half a mile in either direction, which keeps you in the same sort of a buffer. And so I believe the reason we changed it to half a mile was because the software systems that these truck route companies use can put buffers into their system, which let them know when they're putting out their maps for the day. Because they are required to have a manifest, so they get pulled over, right? They have to have some sort of a manifest that explains where all their deliveries are going for that day. So they know where, they know when they get in their trucks in the morning where they're going. And those routing systems can help them stay within the confines of the requirements, because they can put buffers on locations.
Thank you. And you, you provided a table of permits over the past five years. I believe the number overall was 132. Does that relatively low number reflect the infrequent use of overweight, oversized vehicles? Or does that reflect the infrequent permitting despite frequent truck use?
We don't have a lot of reporting, I don't receive a lot of reporting on oversized, overweight trucks that, you know, are, are not permitted. I mean, when we get complaints on trucks, it's just simply volume of trucks on routes and, and areas where it's disruptive to people, to individuals. But it's, it's not necessarily an oversized, overweight issue. But, um, so I wouldn't really have any metrics to know if they're not reported or not, since they are not measured.
Do you believe this has been capturing a significant portion of that traffic?
I think that specifically, these are specific for when there's a deviation and you're oversized, overweight, and you're, you know, and you're not making a delivery. So if you're still on, if you're, in the majority of your movement, you're using a state route, then, you know, if you're using the state route and you're making a delivery and you're within that nine blocks, then you are okay, you know, no permit required. But, so, I don't have any good reason to believe it's underreporting.
And I know I've asked a few questions already, but I'll, one quick one. Do you have any, has there been any analysis or discussion regarding what's the perhaps unintended consequences, if any, for instituting fees for something that there hasn't been before? Any reason to think that that might change positively or negatively truck usage in the city?
I don't, I've not received any negative feedback. And again, it's a pretty nominal fee, it's in line with the same fees that are being paid to do state routes.
Thank you.
Any other councilmembers have a question? On this side of the, anybody? Nope?
I have a question.
Oh, Councilwoman McBride?
Thank you for the presentation. And looking at the listing of the truck routes, and maybe, I'm asking the wrong question, but for instance, I don't see Broadway Street on there, and glad that I don't. But I know that, was it Pepsi, that used to be over there? That used to come down. And I think that we still have some semis that come in that route. And I don't know what the, and you can give it to me later, what the truck route is for that area over there. Because I know that I get, not a lot, but probably over the last couple of months. And I know that you have Indiana closed off, and some parts of the Broadway Street, I believe that's closed off towards Miami. So, but if I can just get that route of semis coming down those streets, because now they're going down Carroll Street. But I know that that might just be a limited time because of the construction. But I don't even, I don't see the route, like the alternative route of where they're taking now. So if you could just send me that information.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. I do not see any other questions from councilmembers. So at this time, we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 130-21?
There is no one from the virtual public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this bill?
There is no one wishing to speak in opposition of this bill as well.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, then, the public hearing on Bill 130-21 is now closed. Councilmembers, you wish to make any statements regarding the bill? I believe Councilman Davis, you said you wanted to make a statement regarding the bill?
Absolutely. And thank you for giving me the floor for a couple of moments. I, I'm not going to belabor the point, nor am I going to just keep beating a dead point. Hopefully, you know, this seed falls on fertile ground. Last year, I remember I asked, and I'm, I'm trying to wrap this thing up so people can kind of like understand what the picture is that I'm at least seeing. Last year, I asked for a comprehensive plan for the rest of the river. It's passed by the council. I think it was almost unanimously, could have been one dissenting voter, two, maybe. But anyhow, that had a lot to do with what we're discovering and what we're analyzing today. Traffic patterns, truck routes, car routes, commerce is what the city, and any city thrives off of. Our ability to produce opportunities that it grows and expands tax base, which usually creates jobs, creates a higher quality of life, et cetera. So if our commerce right routes have been interrupted, or things have been shifted, chances are, those given areas, we're going to see a major economic shift. Now, I'm not speaking on behalf of anything nefarious, or somebody is, you know, behind a curtain, pulling strings, or trying to make somebody dance and do their dirty work. But I think that this city, this council deserves more of a detailed, comprehensive discussion as it relates to traffic patterns, being that as we're allowing, you know, a certain weight of a truck going down one road or not. Again, this is how the discussion has gone on for decades. This actually feeds into redlining, this feeds into poverty-stricken areas, this feeds into no growth, no tax-based expansion. It feeds into so many things. And I think that, I really believe that if this council, and the mayor's office, along with the mayor, would at least have some level of discussion as it pertains to traffic, the patterns, and development. I think the city, this council would be a lot better off in, in understanding the shifts and the balances and the things that we are actually up against that sometimes we can't control. I totally believe that. I'm trying to, I'm pushing this button. If somebody responds and says, "Henry, I agree," they'll say, "Henry, I'm a little bit more interested, I'm picking somebody's natural curiosity." But I'm going to say it again. And if, if we do not want to, and I'll wrap it by saying this, just pay attention to the way the roads that are opened up in Mission Walker, or even on 23 by Notre Dame, and what followed that, that expansion. And you can kind of understand and see what I'm talking about. But thank you. I'm not, again, belabor a big point. I'm not in support of this, because I think that we deserve a larger conversation, not necessarily from you and, and your colleague. But I think that at a planning, planning level, which, in which we said that we're going to be entered into some comprehensive plans here soon, I think this council deserves that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Is there any other councilmembers that wish to make a statement regarding this bill before we move? No? Okay, at this point, then, I'll entertain a motion regarding Bill 130-21.
I'd like to move that we send Bill 130-21 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there has been a motion and it has been duly seconded for Bill 130-21. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 130-21 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I would now like to entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole and report back to the full council.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we still have to do the roll?
No.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
The full council is back in session. We will go now to the bills that are on third reading. This portion of our meeting is where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the Committee of the Whole. Clerk Jones, would you give Bill 129-21 a third reading?
Yes. 129-21, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 602 East Dayton, Councilmanic District Number Three, in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Manic District number three in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation for the committee of the whole regarding Bill 129-21?
Yes, Madam Chair, 129-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now entertain a motion regarding Bill 129-21.
Move for passage.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I have to call a roll on this part.
Yeah, hero call.
Sorry. Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 121, 129-21 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you give substitute Bill 130-21 a third reading?
130-21, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 20, Article 8 of the South Bend Municipal Code to address truck routes through the city and the rules and regulations of trucks and large vehicles.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation for the committee of the whole regarding Bill, substitute Bill 130-21?
Yes, Madam Chair. Bill 130-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion regarding Bill 130-21.
I'd like to move for passage.
They're second.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you take the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Now we will go to bills that are on first reading. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 131-21 a first reading?
131-21, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 2730 Mission Walker Avenue.
Thank you. Is there a motion to send Bill 131-21 to ZNA in public hearing and third reading on December 13th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, any opposition? Motion carries. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 132-21 a first reading?
132-21, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 446 South Carlisle, Council Manic District number six in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. May I have a motion to send Bill 132-21 to ZNA in public hearing and third reading on January 10th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Passes. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 133-21 a first reading?
133-21, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 2430 Prairie Avenue, Council Manic District number six in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like, could I have a motion to send Bill 133-21 to ZNA in public hearing and third reading on January 10th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 134-21 a first reading?
134-21, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 2701 Lincoln Way West, Council Manic District number two in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. May I have a motion to send Bill 134-21 to ZNA in public hearing and third reading on January 10th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 135-21 a first reading?
135-21, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, repealing superseding and replacing ordinance number 10820-21 and fixing the annual pay and monetary fringe benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Fire Department for calendar years 2022, 2023, and 2024.
May I have a motion to send Bill 135-21 to Personnel and Finance in public hearing and third reading on December 13th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 136-22 a first reading?
136-21, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, adopting an investment policy for the city of South Bend for calendar year 2022.
Thank you. Motion to send Bill 136-21 to Personnel and Finance and Public Hearing and Third Reading on December 13th, 2021?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 137-21 a first reading?
137-21, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2021.
Thank you. Motion to send Bill 137-21 to Personnel and Finance in public hearing and third reading on December 13th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 138-21 a first reading?
138-21, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year 2021 of $229,500 from the general fund number 101, $1,070,000 from the Parks and Recreation Fund number 201, $262,000 from the Studebaker Oliver Revitalization Grant Fund number 209, $415,466 from the DCI Federal Fund number 212, $44,000 from the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund number 220, $380,000 from the Liability Insurance Premium Reserve Fund number 226, $10,000 from the Local Road and Street Fund number 251, $29,100 from the IT Innovation 311 Call Center Fund number 279, $1,200,000 from the Fire Department Capital Fund number 287, $81,148 from the Police Federal Drug Enforcement Fund number 299, $2,400,000 from the Local Income Tax Certified Shares Fund number 404, $800,000, $804,900 from the Professional Sports Convention Development Area Fund number 413, $8,145,350 from the Morris Capital Improvement Fund number 416, $500,000 from the 2017 Parks Bond Capital Fund number 471, $250,000 from the Solid Waste Operations Fund number 610, $500,000 from the Water Works Capital Fund number 622, and $41,000 from the Unemployment Compensation Fund number 713.
Chair, I have a question before there's a motion.
Yes.
The purpose of these transfers of dollars, is that for us, is for the administration to save their money back in their own buckets without coming back to council for any type of vote next year? Or is this because there are bills that are out there that needs to be paid before the end of the year?
I believe that the purpose of these is to just, the quarterly true-up, so to speak, and they're just shifting the money around to get them into the proper accounts by the end of the year.
So whereas we'll see a department sometimes spin down, meaning they start spending on things that they may need in a department, is this another form of that? By withholding the monies, keeping the monies?
It can be, yes.
So, last part of it. So the last question is, well, it's not even a question, but the last statement question, that the dollars that are being shifted could potentially go towards things that were budgeted that didn't get passed? Because the dollars would still be there, so I'd still be able to use it for my said purposes.
Correct, but it would have to be passed by council.
It still has to be passed by council. Thank you. That was just a question.
Thank you so much for that question. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 138-21 to Personnel and Finance in public hearing and third reading on December 13th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 139-21 a first reading?
139-21, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the issuance and sale of an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $6,500,000 of City of South Bend, Indiana Economic Development Lease Rental Revenue Bonds Series 2022, Potawatomi Zoo Project, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to send Bill 139-21 to Personnel and Finance in public hearing and third reading on December 13th, 2021?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. At this time, we have unfinished business. Clerk Jones, would you please read the item under unfinished business?
P O A number, P O A number 2021-0810, in an appeal entitlement entitled Westminster, Westminster Holdings LLC versus Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to our parliamentarian, Attorney Palmer, to to outline the appeal instructions to council and about the time that the petitioner and HBC has for presentation and the council question and answer session and also the rebuttal period.
Thank you, Vice President McBride.
Please, I did it again. Is there any way that we can move privilege of the floor up and allow that to happen before we have this hearing? Because there's another hour that's going to be here, at least.
Council's free to make whatever.
I was just looking for the, I was looking for the, for the, for the appetite of the council. You're going to have people here that's here for privilege of the floor, and they're going to be here for another hour at least, given what we're getting ready to do. If they want to say what they have to say and then leave, I think that that will be supportive.
May I pose the question?
No, it's a question. I'm asking for the appetite of the council.
May I ask anyone from the public who are here to speak at the privilege of the floor?
Okay.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved, excuse me, making a motion to move privilege of the floor up right now for purposes of a hearing later on.
I would like to have the roll call, please. Clerk Jones?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax? Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye. Thank you. At this time, we will move privilege of the floor. Disrespectful ruse or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or end or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting shall be 30 minutes. Individuals shall not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda. The council president may assign a topic that will be raised by an individual during the privileges of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review, and topics assigned shall be responded to at the next scheduled council meeting. At this time, if you would like to come up, and please state your name and address for privilege of the floor.
Jason Benicki, 38, 22 Ford Street. A few months ago, I saw a newspaper article talking about some of the work to take some property back from Dave Matthews on a corner lot that was unused. And it got me thinking about maybe how we tend to be a little lax in our follow-up on some of these projects and our tax abatements. In that, maybe we need to do a better job of keeping an eye on these projects, you know? How many years have we given a tax abatement out to the South Bend Chocolate Factory/Museum project that we were told this year will never get off the ground without much larger, you know, taxpayer investment on that? Have we looked at clawing that back? You know, we gave an apartment complex a rather large taxpayer investment and a full tax abatement on the grounds that it would have a grocery store and pharmacy when it opened, and that apartment building is now open and leasing properties. Have we looked into getting back the taxpayer dollars and scaling back the tax abatement on that property? You know, we have the Liberty Tower where they have put in exactly just the hotel, never the restaurant, never the apartments, never the condos that were supposed to go in there. Have we done any review to see if that tax abatement has been clawed back to reflect the failure to fully, you know, realize the project that was proposed at the time of granting these large 10-year tax abatements and putting these taxpayer dollars? So I think we really need to, you know, it's great to see one project where we're saying, hey, you haven't quite completed exactly 100% of what you're doing, and you're kind of sitting on this property waiting for a better deal before you finish it up. But I think we need to make sure we're doing that equally across the board and not just picking one piece of property or one instance to do that. You know, there's a lot of taxpayer dollars tied up into these projects, whether that's direct investment or unpaid taxes that were deferred. And I think we need to make sure that we're much more consistent with that across the board.
Thank you so much. Please state your name and address.
Sharon Benicki, 38, 22 Ford Street. The end of the year is near, and next year, I know the mayor's going to start hustling everybody because he wants all these extra administrators. And I'm just here to remind you that we don't need more administrators, we need more boots on the ground. Just last week, there was a sewer, a water main break down the street from me. In the process of trying to fix that, they broke the shut-off main down in front of my house. Trying to fix that one, the one down the street broke. So now we've got three shut-off mains that are broke that are bubbling up water. And the gentlemen that come out, they're awesome, they're fabulous, they're talking, but they admit they're in over their head. They don't have enough guys with boots on the grounds to fix these as they come up, much less for the future that breaks down. So when the mayor starts, you know, his back room, I need, I need, I need. What the city needs is more people fixing these water mains. We don't need to subcontract out all this work because that's not fiscally responsible to keep paying contractors off city dollars when we should be cultivating our own work crews. Because God knows, we've got enough work in the city under the streets to keep our guys going for the next 30 years without having to hire contractors. I just want to, I'm going to keep coming back and hounding you, boots on the ground, not people up in desk. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Joe Laurie, 532 West Brown, Mission Walker. I'm not going to get off until the real headache while I'm here. I'm going to just start with, I beat a case against the city of South Bend for a crime I didn't commit. So that's a whole nother conversation. I've been an Uber driver for four years. Picked up 14,000 people in the city of South Bend. This is where it started from. We get pulled over by the police, Notre Dame area, the Eddie Street Commons area, I don't think I'm familiar with that, Eddie Street Commons. I'm one of the famous guys who do a lot of Ubering in the city of South Bend. I contacted Uber, we're going to set up something down the road. I'm one of the ones that get pulled over, get picked on, get harassed, because my van is hooked up with videos, people can play video games, they can do all types of stuff. So they think, hey, this guy's selling drugs. He don't work for Uber, he sell drugs. So now, like I said, I beat a crime that I get charged with city of South Bend. I host college parties as well, host college parties in the city, in your city. So the city sets something up, say, hey, we're going to harass Joe, we're going to come up to his house and put holes in his grass. That's another violation of my rights. That's another violation of my rights. Okay? So I don't know who authorized the hit with the police or whatever, who authorized that hit, but I have pictures. I have surveillance cameras. I have it all on tape. So I know the guys can see that. I don't know who authorized for the city to come out and dig holes on the side of my house to watch me because they think I sell drugs and I don't. I'm an Uber driver, once again. Also, this is probably a car you guys. I probably get the plate ran by the feds. One of the cars is just sits outside my house. I talked to city mission walker to say, we ain't nothing to do with that. The city of South Bend has. You need to talk to them. So that's why I'm here. This is another car that sits outside my house. Just, just, just sits out there. Probably police officers. They sit outside my house and think I'm a drug dealer. My thing is, I'm not gonna be picked on. If I have to get out there and get somebody to run for mayor to get this stop, I'm on that. So I don't know, I don't know what needs to happen. If this the first place I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start here. I'm gonna start with the mayor's office. I'm gonna start with the police chief's office. And I'm, I'm, I'm about to go on that's on the TV to get it stopped. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I don't know if you want those pictures submitted to the clerk's office for record because we cannot see them. We can do that and get them back to you so council can have a copy of them.
Yep.
And thank you so much for.
Now I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it on here.
Thank you so much. We'll make sure that we will get them.
I'm gonna put my contact information on there too, my number and stuff, so.
Thank you. At this time, I will go back to the unfinished business, which Clerk Jones did read the appeal. And I will turn it over to Politarian Attorney Palmer for further instruction.
Thank you, Vice President McBride. This is an appeal from the Historic Preservation Commission's denial of a certificate of appropriateness to Westminster Holdings Company, LLC, excuse me. The procedure for the council tonight is that the petitioner, which is Westminster, will have a maximum of 20 minutes to present its case, which shall address the specific issues under review, statement position of the petitioner, any relevant witness statements, and the requested action which the petitioner is seeking. Following that maximum of 20 minutes, Historic Preservation Commission by its attorney will have a maximum of 20 minutes to include statement of its position, the relevant witness statements of any, and the requested action which the HPC is seeking. The petitioner will then have a maximum of five minutes for rebuttal. Following the presentations of the parties, the common council will have a total of 15 minutes to ask questions. It's 15 minutes for all council members and not for any individual council member. Following the question and answer session by the council, the common council shall review the actions of the HPC. I want to remind the council that this is not a question of whether you agree with the HPC and its decision or not. Your review is limited to whether the HPC's action was arbitrary, capricious, an abuse of discretion, or otherwise not in accordance with applicable law, contrary to constitutional right, power, privilege, or immunity, in excess of statutory jurisdiction, authority, limitations, or statutory rights, without observance of procedures required by applicable law and ordinance, or unsupported by substantial evidence. After that, that section is completed, the council will have an opportunity to make whatever comments they wish on the presentations and their thoughts. Following the comment section, there will be, should be a motion to either affirm the decision of the HPC or to reverse the decision of the HPC. There will be a roll call vote on that motion at the, at the end of the hearing. So with that, I believe we're ready for the petitioner who is appearing virtually, I believe.
Thank you. Mr. Flathers, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, is, does this have video as well or is it just audio?
It's video if you're, do you have camera access to turn your camera on?
Your camera has been enabled. Turn it on if you'd like to share video. Trying to turn it on. It's saying only select participants can share video.
You should be able to share that.
Can you see me?
I think, can you, is your screen in full screen mode?
Look like we're looking at the sign.
Oh, that's, how do I put it in full screen mode? Do you know?
You know, in the top right-hand corner, I believe you would see the X and then a box in the middle, a double box.
Uh huh.
Do you see the double box? I think if you click on that, it should make it bigger.
Okay. No, that's not it.
I'm not the tech geek here.
I understand.
Let me see. I can't see what it's saying. You know how he can make it bigger? I don't know if you got the camera turned the other way.
I'm, I'm facing my screen.
Can you turn it around? And let's see if that.
Do you know how to do this? I've, I've used Zoom previously. I've never used this Microsoft meeting.
Things.
It's something probably.
Something, what, is there anything obstructing the camera view?
No, the camera's.
Oops, sorry.
Did you have any documents to share or you'll just be speaking?
No, I'll tell you what. I, I'm perfectly willing to do this by audio if you can all live without seeing my face.
I think, I would love to see your face, but I think we can live with that.
Okay. I understand I have 20 minutes. Is that correct?
You have 20 minutes and we have Attorney Palmer, the parliamentarian. He will be keeping time.
Okay, I'm gonna begin, okay?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Flathers, manager of Westminster Holdings LLC. I am here today to speak on our appeal to, of the Historic Preservation Commission's denial of our application for a certificate of appropriateness, COA, for two vinyl windows installed at 768 Portage Avenue in the Chapin Local Historic District. We purchased the home in April 2021. In early July, we installed those windows to replace damaged lead-based paint-ridden windows along the side of the house facing Portage Way. Days later, I received a letter from Mr. Adam Toring, Historic Preservation Administrator, demanding we file an application for a COA for this work. We filed an application, paid the $20 fee, and were given a September 20 hearing date before the commission. Upon receiving Mr. Toring's letter, I did not finish the window trim because I was compelled to wait until our application was approved. That is why the window frame trim remains incomplete. On September 20th, as I sat outside chambers organizing my presentation, two members of the HPC in the hallway openly joked about denying applications. That was disconcerting to me and suggested that my case may have already been decided. When I entered chambers, I noted the names of the commissioners. One of them was John Tiffany. I know two of his brothers, one of whom at the Tiffany Group was our real estate broker in South Bend. I had never met personally John Tiffany, but my daughter had looked at one of his properties for sale. She told me that he lived in Edwardsburg, Michigan. When it was my turn, I made a presentation to the board, during which I showed the commissioners photos of my windows and 17 additional photos I had taken on Leland and Ashland Avenues in the district earlier that morning. I stated that I was asking for a simple administrative ratification of the completed work. On the reverse of crystal clear eight-by-10 glossy photos, I noted that many of the homes had vinyl windows and that these types of windows offered improved energy efficiency, safety, and appearance over original wooden ones. At the end of my presentation, I asked panel members two questions. Are you a resident of South Bend and are you a resident of Portage Township? The HPC then voted eight to zero to reject the COA application. Commissioner Tiffany was one of the votes. The letter dated September 23, 2021, Mr. Toring quoted from the HPC guidelines on windows and doors noting, quote, "About half of the structures in the district have aluminum storm windows. The other half have wood storm windows." The document makes no mention of the existence of vinyl-clad windows in the district. The Windows and Doors guideline continues later referencing window sashes, saying, "They shall be replaced with units and trimmed resembling the original." Mr. Toring's letter stated that, that staff retained the removed window sashes were you to want to reinstall them in the window openings. With that background, we reached the basis of our October 18th appeal to the common council filed with the city clerk. The appeal was grounded on three causes of action constitutional in nature. First, Mr. Tiffany was ineligible to vote at the HPC hearing. As demonstrated in Exhibit 2, Mr. Tiffany lives outside of Portage Township, site of the Chapin Historic District. Article 6, Section 6 of the Indiana State Constitution states, "All county, township, and town officers shall reside within their respective counties, townships, and towns and shall keep their respective offices at such places therein and perform such duties as may be directed by law." Applying this law to the facts of the present case, Mr. Tiffany was constitutionally required to be a resident of Portage Township in order to vote on the HPC. In its position statement, the city attorney stipulates that Mr. Tiffany does not reside in Portage Township. Mr. Tiffany had a choice to make. He could vote yes or no, but in each case, his vote would be unconstitutional. He voted no. A third option, which he did not choose, was to abstain from voting. If Mr. Tiffany had abstained, we would not be faced with this constitutional crisis. His vote, however, nullified the votes of all the other commissioners. The first word in Article 6, Section 6 is "all." All means eight of eight. All eight commissioners were required to be constitutionally seated to ensure a valid vote. The statute does not say seven out of eight or a quorum or anything but the word "all." Because Mr. Tiffany's vote was invalid, all other commissioners' votes became equally void, outlawed by the requirements of the state constitution. This forms our central constitutional complaint and cause of action number one of our appeal. The HPC's vote to deny Westminster Holdings' application should be overturned by the common council. The council sits as an elected legislative body with oversight authority over the city's executive actions and commissions. Let me address the second constitutional issue, the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which reads, quote, "No state shall deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of laws." When I appeared before the HPC September 20th, I enjoyed a constitutional right to be treated with equal protection of law. HPC commissioners asserted that the installation of vinyl windows was prohibited under their guidelines. However, in these standards referenced in Exhibit 4 of our appeal, nowhere are vinyl windows prohibited. No commissioner nor the HPC's attorney have pointed to any phrase in the text itself outlawing vinyl windows. The video of the September 20th hearing shows that many of the commissioners did not review seriously the photographic evidence presented to them. I gave them visual evidence of the widespread installation of vinyl windows in a section of the district. Owners of dozens of homes throughout the district now have vinyl windows installed. The HPC has offered no evidence that all of these windows were, quote, "grandfathered in." As stated previously, as of 2005, according to the written guidelines, half of the windows in the district were wood, the other half aluminum-framed. That this has been allowed to happen over the years and that other owners are not being required to restore their old, single-pane, wood-framed originals while we are, indicates a double standard of justice. The HPC is applying the law equally to, is not applying the law equally to residents in the district and thus abrogates our 14th Amendment right to equal protection. Our third clause of action relates to Mr. Toring's unwarranted seizure of the original window sashes. The Fourth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution states, quote, "The right of the people to be secure in their persons, house, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause supported by oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized." The city inspector's photo of the original window sashes indicates that they were in a dumpster. This was within the curtilage or boundary line of 768 Portage Avenue. As such, this city employee had no legal authority to enter the property without a warrant. Either the inspector or Mr. Toring should have contacted the city attorney's office to request a search warrant to allow them to confiscate the sashes. It would have taken just a minute, just a few minutes to draft a warrant and present it to a judge. The real question is why this was not done. Possibly they were concerned that a magistrate would not sign such a warrant. In any event, the city has offered no evidence of an emergency or any exigency requiring trespass into the backyard to seize the windows. It remained constitutionally required to secure a warrant. The city attorney cited a couple criminal cases regarding the warrantless searches of drug dealers and money launderers' garbage cans. But the current case is a civil tort, not criminal. The city clearly had copious time to draft a search warrant. Because South Bend officials disregarded our enumerated Fourth Amendment rights, the seizure was illegal. We asked the common council to restore our rights in this matter by overruling the HPC's unconstitutional vote to deny the COA. Now let us turn to the behavior of attorney Sandy Kennedy. Upon being admitted to practice law in the state of Indiana, each applicant takes and subscribes to the following oath or affirmation. "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana." A few clauses later, the oath continues, "I will abstain from offensive personality and advance no fact prejudicial to the honor or reputation of a party or witness." On page nine of the HPC's position statement, Ms. Kennedy admits, "She said, 'Yes, that's you, little man. Sit down.'" In sarcastically referring to me as "little man," the counselor violated her attorney's oath by demonstrating offensive personality with the aim of attacking my honor. Her words were reprehensible and had no place in a public governmental hearing. Because they were said before the vote, they were also prejudicial against me in the subsequent ballot. Further, in ordering me to sit down, the HPC advocate exceeded her authority and abused her power. Only the HPC president in charge of the hearing was entitled to issue such a directive. On page five of her position statement, Ms. Kennedy describes Westminster Holdings LLC, states its official address, and claims it owns a residential property that, according to Zillow.com, has a value of $1.8 million. A court of law would strike that comment as irrelevant. In this case, it has nothing to do with 768 Portage Avenue. The attorney's clear purpose is to otherize me and to state implicitly and explicitly to members of the common council that I am not one of you. I'm sorry, I have a photo here. I can't show it to you, but this is a photo from me from 30 years ago when I began a 10-year army career. During my military service, my mission was to serve and protect all Americans, not just Californians or Indians. While you were asleep, I was somewhere in the world protecting you, doing my part in that important unsung effort. Next, we turn to page nine, where the lawyer asserts falsely that I sought to bully and intimidate the commissioners. To emphasize the point, she bolds and underlines the words, "A video review of the meeting shows I was..." shows I was neither a bully nor an intimidator. I neither raised my voice nor threatened the board, but only exercised my right to know whether board members were legally and constitutionally hearing my case." I will now establish that the September twentieth HPC hearing was arbitrary and abuse of discretion, and not in accordance with applicable law. As stipulated on page eleven of the city's position statement, Commissioner Downs-Krostenko claimed that vinyl clad windows in the district were allowed to, in some homes, because they had been installed prior to two thousand five, and were therefore grandfathered in. If that position is correct, then the HPC must be able to provide evidence within the guidelines themselves to validate such a standard operating procedure. Pages seventy-four and seventy-five of the Guidelines and Standards for Historic Preservation and Development for Chapin Park Historic District spell out the rules on windows. I have read through this section of the guidelines multiple times and can find no reference to the grandfathering of existing vinyl windows. Such a direction does not exist in this governing section on windows, nor anywhere else. Because there is no statement, no statute on grandfathering, the HPC applies an arbitrary and capricious interpretation of law to deny our COA application. In Mr. Toring's July thirteenth letter demanding our application, he states, quote, "Consideration by the Historic Preservation Commission of proposed repairs or alterations is guided by the Chapin Park standards and guidelines." Since Mr. Toring later recommended that the HPC deny our application, his recommendation too should have been based on the guidelines. Since the guidelines make no mention of pre-two thousand five vinyl windows in the district, nor establish a policy towards grandfathering in such units, there is no written law upon which to not deny our certificate of appropriateness. Arbitrary is defined as "based on random choice or personal whim rather than any reason or system." The HPC's decision to deny the COA was clearly arbitrary. The decision abused discretion because, as previously outlined, Mr. Toring noted that the jurisdiction to decide this matter derives only from the guidelines themselves. By ignoring its own roadmap, the HPC abused its discretion unjustifiably. The HPC only has as much power as its charter allows. Since its authority lies in enforcing its guidelines for Chapin Park, it cannot go beyond that. Given that I have just told the common council, the panel acted in excess of its statutory authority by citing a standard of law that does not exist, to assume something is there that is simply not there and to apply law that is only notional is absolutely capricious. The clerk's instructions to the common council tonight also suggest that it review whether the HPC's action was without observance of procedures required by applicable law and ordinance, or unsupported by substantial evidence. My September twentieth hearing lasted twenty-one minutes. Amazingly, thirteen minutes of my allotted time to make my case was taken from me by commissioners' interjections. Half of the commissioners chimed in with comments, while half remained resolutely silent. At no point during that time did any of the commissioners ask questions about my application. They should have asked me questions. It was their duty. In the third paragraph of his September twenty-third letter summarizing the meeting, which is my Exhibit One, Mr. Toring writes, "In making its determination, the Historic Preservation Commission considered the detriment to the public welfare if permitted, even though it is not deemed appropriate, and the potential hardship that the denial of the COA could cause the applicant." Although Mr. Toring wrote all that in his letter, in reality, none of that occurred. The HPC actually considered nothing at all. Blindly accepting Mr. Toring's recommendation for denial is not considering. For example, I told the board, as my daughter had in her prior email, that the original window sashes and frames contained dangerous lead-based paint, and that the tenants had a minor child. Did the HPC ask any questions about that? Not one. How old was the child? How extensive was the lead paint? And in what condition? Did they consider the post-nineteen seventy-eight EPA ban on lead-based paint in the home? No, not a peep from the government body that was supposed to investigate the effect on the public welfare. My tenants and I deserve protection under the public welfare. In fact, we are significantly more impacted by this issue than anyone else in the public. Likewise, there were zero questions about the potential hardship that the denial of the COA would cause us. We were never queried about the cost of the windows, or potential energy saving to our tenants, or any of that. Mr. Toring's assertion that these matters were considered is totally false, and the video of the meeting proves that abundantly. Commissioners broke into my presentation that evening to make assertions of fact without providing any evidence. Commissioner Hertel, for example, claimed that properly refurbished, original windows could be ninety-five percent as efficient as modern dual-pane vinyl replacements. She offered no evidence for this claim. My subsequent research on the internet found that a single-pane window has an R-value of one, whereas new dual-pane vinyl units are typically about three point seven. That is a huge efficiency difference.
Two minutes, sir.
Ms. Downs-Krostenko toward the end of the meeting claimed that wood-framed windows can last one hundred sixty years and can be restored to last another one hundred sixty years, totaling three hundred twenty years. This obviously strains credulity. I ask the common council to put an end to this dispute and to overturn the HPC's denial of our COA for seven-six-eight Portage Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you so much at this time. There's a time for the HPC's presentation. You have twenty minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sandra Kennedy. I have an office on the twelfth floor of this building. Good evening, council members. Tonight, you've heard from Mr. Flathers. Mr. Flathers really doesn't want you to know that he lives in California, because he doesn't want you to know that he comes here to buy twenty houses, twenty affordable houses that other people could own. He didn't tell you that he didn't get a building permit to put in those windows and to remediate the lead paint. Other people, individuals who could have bought those affordable homes, could have taken advantage of city programs to remediate the lead paint. Mr. Flathers doesn't want you to know that. Instead, Mr. Flathers wants the city to waive the twenty-dollar fee. That's in the email that his daughter sent. So forgive me when I tell you that Mr. Flathers really thinks he deserves a lot from this city and this council. Mr. Flathers would have you believe he's an investor in this community. Mr. Flathers is putting in windows that don't even equal five hundred dollars, and if they do, he hasn't gotten a building permit. Mr. Flathers is throwing original windows away in a garbage can, a city garbage can. Now, as the person who drafted the contract with Republic, you cannot throw contractor waste in a garbage can. So these are things Mr. Flathers doesn't want you to know. However, I will tell you a little bit more about his constitutional arguments, which are in your, in the position statements that you all have. His first argument was that Mr. Tiffany was improperly seated on the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Tiffany was an appointee of this council. He gave you an address on Darden Road in South Bend, unincorporated St. Joseph County. The Historic Preservation Commission is a joint commission of the city and the county. It has nothing to do with Portage Township, which is in both the city and the county, and there are historic properties outside of Portage Township on which people who don't live in Portage Township can opine. Mr. Tiffany gave us the address of Darden Road in South Bend. I have looked on public records. He has a homestead exemption at Darden Road in South Bend with his wife. That typically means that is your place of residence. His home in Edwardsburg appears to be on a lake. It is not uncommon for people to have lake homes in Michigan. Even if Mr. Tiffany was improperly seated on the Historic Preservation Commission, that would mean seven people voted to deny the appellant's petition. Not that they would all be made unconstitutionally seated, since all of them save two live in South Bend. If you watched the video, and I gave you the link in your position statement, you will see that Mr. Flathers did ask his two questions. He asked by a show of hands, who lives in the city of South Bend? And then later, who lives in Portage Township? The only logical question to ask next is, what is your address? The commissioners were clearly confused by this question. They are all volunteers. They are all unpaid. In fact, my understanding, it is difficult to get people to volunteer to sit on commissions. So when we have people attacking them and attacking them for where they live, it makes it even harder. And I, for one, am not going to stand and watch my commissioners be bullied or intimidated. And you don't have to raise your voice to be a bully or to intimidate somebody. Mr. Flathers argues that the HPC violated his Fourteenth Amendment right to due process. In fact, at one point during the video, Mr. Flathers says that he's been able to make all of his points, and so he prepares to leave. And now he says he wasn't given due process. He passed around pictures of what he said were vinyl windows. Mr. Van Overberg here is the HPC staff inspector, who went around and looked at all the same houses and documented whether those were vinyl windows, or whether they were aluminum storm windows. Older aluminum storm windows apparently have a white outline, and they can be mistaken for vinyl. Additionally, some homes have illegally installed vinyl windows. They were, like Mr. Flathers, brought before the Historic Preservation Commission on a retroactive application, and they were denied. They are still installed. They have not been uninstalled. HPC at the time didn't have a mechanism for enforcement. There is language in the zoning ordinance for enforcement, and that's what they hope to do next year. Mr. Flather, or Mr. Toring can speak more to that in a moment, and so hopefully that will not be an issue. Additionally, at the time those two applications came and were denied, HPC worked with the building department to flag any applications for a permit, so that they would flag the building as historic property, and then people would be directed to HPC. And then finally, Mr. Flathers argues that HPC staff violated the Fourth Amendment to the Constitution. I did cite some cases. You can go through garbage cans. There are people called garbage pickers. They go through garbage cans. They take the good stuff and they reuse it. In this case, it is a crime to throw out your original windows in Chapin Park. It is in the standards and guidelines as prohibited. The standards and guidelines prohibit removing and destroying original windows when they can be repaired. I'd like to turn this floor over to Mr. Toring, who will talk a little bit about the normal procedure for an application for a certificate of appropriateness, someone who doesn't come after they've already installed their windows, but who comes ahead of the game.
Hello, I'm Adam Toring, Historic Preservation Administrator. Offices on the fourteenth floor of this building in the Department of Community Investment. I, as well as part-time Inspector Ross Van Overberg, serve as staff to the Historic Preservation Commission. The commission is responsible for reviewing projects and issuing a document known as a certificate of appropriateness for modifications to the exterior sites and, pardon me, to the exterior and the site of properties that are individually designated as local landmarks, or as properties with one of our nine local historic districts. A certificate of appropriateness indicates that the desired project is in keeping with the established standards and guidelines for that designated property. As staff to the commission, I am charged with working with property owners while they go through that process of submitting an application, advising them on the review of that, and then guiding them towards a successful project. I've been with the commission since the fall of two thousand seventeen, so I have a pretty good idea of how they're going to rule on different projects, even as commissioners come on and come off. Submitted projects are divided into two categories: Those that I can administratively approve to accelerate the process. The vast majority of projects fall into that category, and those that have to be reviewed at the commission's monthly meeting. The projects that are administratively approved often are those that comply with the existing standards and guidelines. A few quick examples of administratively approved projects include tearing off and replacing roofs, installing a new fence, landscaping, and just general wear and tear and maintaining the outside of a structure. Projects that go to the commission generally constitute what we call major projects, including demolitions, new construction or additions, retroactive projects where the applicant is asking for approval of a project that has already been completed, or those that do not comply with the standards and guidelines. For context, staff administratively approved one hundred and twenty projects this year. I've been working by myself since April, thankful for the assistance of Ross as a part-time employee. And the commission has approved thirty-four projects and denied seven, including the one that you're hearing about tonight. In an ideal circumstance, the property owner would contact our office proactively before the project is started. We're there to advise them on different ways that they could maintain their structure. We have a very uncurated list of contractors that we provide to them, and then we might connect them with other people in their neighborhood who may be versed in the same thing that they're working with at that particular time. As Sandy said, we're a property owner or contractor who go to the building department to get a building permit for a project on a locally designated property. The building department has those properties flagged in their computer system. That wasn't something that was really in place prior to two thousand sixteen. From what I understand, so we're having issues with approvals where, pardon me, where we were having issues where projects were getting building permits that hadn't been reviewed by the commission. So that, the building department then encourages the property owner to come talk to us. Window replacement remains one of the most contentious projects that come before the commission. The standards and guidelines advocate for the preservation of original materials, including windows. Window replacement projects require that an assessment of the existing windows should occur. If the existing windows are deteriorated beyond repair, replacement of the windows may be approved by the commission. For context, at the commission's most recent meeting in November, there was a project where staff recommended for approval of deteriorated windows. They were deteriorated, heavy water damage, the windows pretty much falling apart. We advocate for replacement in those circumstances. Staff offered to conduct site visits with property owners to discuss window restoration and replacement projects, and we've conducted thirty-six of those site visits this year. Again, it's primarily me. I'm thankful for Ross again. Many of the windows that we have seen, pardon me, that we see have been painted or sealed shut, so they're inoperable. The ropes that hang the weights, so there's weights behind pockets in the sides of the windows, those have been cut, so the rope, the weight has fallen down in the pocket. Or the glazing putty, which is the material that is holding the glass in the frame, has deteriorated and has failed. All of these items that I've just described to you are maintenance issues. Like, that is not a failure of the window. It just needs to be maintained. And so the commission, when they hear those examples, they don't advocate for replacement in those cases. I'm going to turn it over to Inspector Ross Van Overberg, pardon me, before I walk away. Sandy mentioned zoning administration. We work directly alongside the zoning team. We're optimistic that zoning administration and zoning violations may be a way that we can apply more pressure to property owners that are noncompliant, which I will fully admit, compliance when people have been found to not receive a certificate of appropriateness has been a problem. So in the event that a project is denied, historically, we've had little means of making someone reverse their project. I'm going to turn it over to Ross at this point to talk about the condition of the sashes as he saw them in the alley.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ross Van Overberg. I am the Historic Preservation Inspector with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. On the date that I was doing my normal re- On the date that I was doing my normal routine cruising of the historic districts looking for compliance on projects, I drove down one of the alleys, this particular one between Portage Avenue and Ashland Avenue, at which point down the alley, I noticed that there were window sashes and a garbage toter that was on the edge of the alley. I then parked my car and did an inspection on foot of the property that those garbage cans were by, that is 768 Portage Avenue. On foot, I was able to see the windows that had been replaced with the replacement vinyl windows. I took pictures documenting everything, as I do with any of the violations that I find. I also looked at the windows in the dumpster and noted that they were in perfect condition. They were good candidates for restoration. They were not deteriorated beyond repair, at which point I filed my violation notice in our computer system, made notice to Administrator Adam Touring, and he puts together the letter that goes to the property owner, at which point then I retrieve the windows from the dumpster. The claim has been made that I trespassed onto the property. In order to retrieve those windows, the dumpsters were in fact on the edge of Portage Court, which is a street, and therefore standing in the street was able to retrieve the windows without ever leaving the public right of way. If you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you very much. I want to turn this over to...
Paulies, I'm going to introduce Joanie Downs-Kristenko. She is the Architectural Historian for the commission. She is appointed by the remaining eight commissioners. She is not selected by any governing body. She's been selected by the commissioners. She's in the middle of her first full term as a commissioner. She filled in at the end of a previous Architectural Historian's term. So, Joanie.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Joan Downs-Kristenko, and I live at 849 Forest Avenue in South Bend in the Chapin Park neighborhood. And I'd like to begin with a little information about myself, because it's pertinent to the context and content of the appeal, but I don't know how much time is left. How much time is left? Okay. So I'll just summarize by saying that I am the Architectural Historian on the Historic Preservation Commission, and I've restored nine houses in the Chapin Park neighborhood. I've also held various leadership positions, including being on the committee that wrote the standards and guidelines in 2004 for the Chapin Park neighborhood. I tell you this because it's important to this situation. So I'd like to address the issues at hand. The first question about the presence of vinyl windows in the district is important. There are a few vinyl windows in the district, and they all predate the foundation of the neighborhood as a historic district. City records will show that I'm a constant source of information on buildings in Chapin Park, which receive changes without proper adjudication. In layman's terms, I'm a dog walker and an architectural historian, and I notice everything. In fact, in addition to my regular formal correspondence, which is part of the public record, I also began a document back in 2007, which records the properties which saw illegal changes or which were not in compliance with city code or the Historic Preservation Ordinance since the Chapin Park district was formed in 2005. I really do kind of have an encyclopedic knowledge of the architectural details of Chapin Park neighborhood. Mr. Flathers' photographs of nearby properties are not relevant to his argument for two reasons. When they show vinyl windows or when they show replacement windows, those windows are without exception either put in before Chapin Park was a protected district, or in fact, do not show vinyl windows at all. A large number of his photographs show original windows, which are obscured by metal or very occasionally by vinyl storm windows. He brought up a question about grandfathering. I'd like to say that historic districts' guidelines and standards are designed only to be activated when a homeowner wants to make a change to their property. No one who lives in an old home that maybe before their time had many changes to its original appearance is forced to make any changes. You are never forced to do anything unless code comes to you and says your property is substandard. So he argues that somehow the guidelines demand that owners change things, and that's absolutely not true. You don't have to upgrade or restore anything until you decide that you're going to make some kind of change to your property. I'm running out of time, so I don't want to do too much on that.
Two minutes.
I'd like to address vinyl windows. Why is it that vinyl windows are not deemed appropriate even when a homeowner is granted permission to put in replacement windows? Put simply, vinyl is the least durable, the least effectively painted to match any historic color scheme, the least functionally reliable, the least weather resistant, or energy conservative. Original wood windows, well-maintained, do have a lifespan of hundreds of years. There are buildings in the United States that are wood, that are more than 400 years old, which are still standing and have been maintained. In fact, this is borne out by the National Trust for Historic Preservation and the National Park Service Preservation Division. Modern replacement windows fail reliably and must be added to the landfill in between 15 to 25 years on average. Because the Historic Preservation Commission is a conservation group, we think a lot about how to reuse and recycle. We think about respect for original hardwoods and original hardware. We know that if original windows does need, we know that if an original window does need full replacement, its wood surfaces are less toxic to the environment, even if they have some lead paint, than the entire assemblage of metal, plastic, and glass, which makes up a replacement window. Such windows cannot effectively be taken apart to recycle their constituents' parts. It's also true that properly maintained wood windows with properly fitting wooden storms are good insulators. The people who tell you otherwise are the people who financially benefit from getting you to buy new windows. In other words, the window manufacturing industry.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
Let me just say, no transgression of process, no irregularity of enforcement, or any subjective persecution was experienced by Mr. Flathers in the case of the windows at the rental property he owns on Portage Avenue. We do not blindly follow staff recommendations. We're all familiar with the guidelines. The guidelines are elastic, and they are written that way on purpose, because it's necessary for us to adjudicate individual examples and individual properties that have individual stories and individual owners. In this case, it was very clear that Mr. Flathers illegally removed his windows, threw them in the garbage can. When inspected, they were perfectly fine. He put in inferior windows, and the treatment of those windows was inferior with insulation that was leaving a residue on the new windows and couldn't be removed.
Time, ma'am.
So please, please consider Historic Preservation's ruling and uphold us.
Thank you, Mr. Flathers. You have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let me reiterate. Article 6, Section 6 of the Indiana Constitution states, "All county, township, and town officers shall reside within their respective counties, townships, and towns, and shall keep their respective offices at such places therein and perform such duties as may be directed by law." In the HPC attorney's response, or position statement, rather, she says, quote, "Portage Township is not a standalone political entity," and argues therefore that Mr. Tiffany may be either a city resident of South Bend or a county resident. She is, in doing that, explicitly misinterpreting the law. The law is written in black and white and is very clear. The word is "and." The word is not "or." The word is "and." All county, township, and town officers. I looked up township under, I just did, I went to Wikipedia to find out what is a township out here in California. And by the way, I'm not afraid to say I'm speaking to you from 25943 Deer Run Lane, Salinas, California. I'm in California right now. I will be back in South Bend in January or February. I was in South Bend all of spring, summer, and fall this year, working to restore nine houses this summer. So my experience in restoring historical houses, granted, those were not inside the Chapin Historic Park District, but they were just a few blocks away. They were of the same or even older age than the house in question. I do have that experience. But I wanted to find out what is a township. Out here in California, townships are typically simply a six by six, six mile by six mile chunk of land, which are used in the Public Land Survey System. That indicates that Mr. Tiffany was required to be a resident of Portage Township at the time of the vote. Now, I was surprised to find Ms. Kennedy admit that there is actually two members of the board that are not in Portage Township. I don't know who the other one is, but it's very interesting that she would bring that up. I would point out that Ms. Kennedy compares what I was doing to a crime. She claimed that I committed a crime by throwing windows in a dumpster. First of all, I did not throw the windows in the dumpster. I left them, in fact, on the front porch with the intention of picking them up later. It may have been the tenants or someone else that threw the windows in the dumpster. I'm not sure. But if it was a crime, Ms. Kennedy should have filed a police report or had me arrested. That clearly did not happen, because what she says is frankly ridiculous. It is not a crime to throw a window in a garbage can. I'm sorry. Mr. Ross Van Overberg did not get a warrant. As he said, he did not get a warrant. Controlling law is a case called MAP versus Ohio from 1960, where the United States Supreme Court simply said there is an exclusionary law that evidence obtained illegally by an unwarranted and unreasonable search or seizure is inadmissible. And that's the case here. Simply, the window sashes that were confiscated by Mr. Van Overberg may not be used evidentially.
One minute, sir.
Thank you. Finally, Ms. Downs-Kristenko made certain claims at the meeting, for example, concerning vinyl windows. She said vinyl windows cannot be recycled. She said this in the September 20th meeting. I went to a website. This was very easy, a simple Google search. There's a company called MGM Industries in Hendersonville, Tennessee. They've written a long article on recycling PVC and vinyl windows. In fact, they say that the recycled PVC with 9% titanium dioxide for UV protection are actually much better than the original windows. So the notion that you cannot recycle vinyl windows is patently false, as are frankly many of the notions put forward by the commissioners that day. They were simply nonscientific, nonfactual, particularly with relation to energy efficiency. Dual pane windows are far more efficient than single pane windows. Everybody knows that. Everybody...
Time, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Flathers, for your rebuttal. At this time, counsel, we have 15 minutes for discussion. I will ask that we only ask at this time one question to go down the line to give counsel, everyone, an opportunity for discussion. So if there are any questions that we need to discuss among each other or for discussion, I would ask that we have that, and I would ask the parliamentarian to keep time. We have 15 minutes total. I see Councilwoman Hammond, your hand.
Yes, I would like to know whether or not it is clearly stated in the guidelines for the Historic Preservation Commission that vinyl windows are not allowed.
Please come up to the microphone. Yes, you can also ask...
Could I just ask a general request, because we are in short time that the...
Joan Downs, sorry. So many things are not specifically outlined in the guidelines. The guidelines and standards are guidelines. They say things like, it is the intention of preservation to always save anything that can be restored. It's pretty vague. It is because materials change all the time. So for instance, we approve metal clad windows and wood windows for replacement quite often. We have come to know through experience that the vinyl windows are the cheapest and the most likely to fail. We learn these things all the time about new materials. There's all kinds of composite material siding, and things are happening all the time, and we don't change the rule, the language of the guidelines all the time. And it was actually, we were instructed when we had the guidelines put forward, which by the way, they come as a template from like national bodies, which they basically are the same guidelines with little tweaks that you see all over the country.
Okay, so nothing specific.
So we don't have to say that, but we do as a body and have for the entire time that I've been involved since 2005, not allowed vinyl windows.
At that moment, you guys can stand there, and we will continue on with the next comment or question that we have, because of time. Councilwoman Warner, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Councilwoman Tomas Morgan.
Well, it does say in the guidelines, under prohibited original doors, windows, and hardware shall not be discarded where they can be restored. New window door openings, which would alter feature, inappropriate new window and door features such as metal, vinyl, et cetera, shall not be installed. So am I reading that correctly, that vinyl is...
For my searching of it very quickly, vinyl is only listed four times, and it's in regards to siding typically, in some cases, there's been vinyl siding that's been installed. And there actually is an allowance for that in certain cases, when the siding is degraded, that you could install vinyl siding in those cases. Faces of some vinyl and aluminum sided houses are covered, and I did this by just searching very quickly for vinyl in the Chapin Park standards and guidelines. And then there's a section about vinyl and fiber, pardon me, fiberboard composite siding as well. But retention of original materials is repeatedly stressed, and that is what staff goes off of.
Thank you. Councilwoman Niskoski. Oh, I'll go back to Councilwoman Warner.
Mr. Palmer, can you explain the standard of review? And you said this earlier, but our job here is not to reweigh and decide whether they decide correctly. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. You may disagree with their decision, but unless it's arbitrary, capricious, or unconstitutional, or any one of the five standards I gave earlier, you should affirm.
With that, that was going to be my statement after the question is in answer, period. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, I have a second part to that question I asked. The last speaker said something about elastic guidelines, which hints to a lack of consistency when making these types of decisions, and I find that concerning.
Understood. I will say from my participation in the commission this year with regards to vinyl window projects, they have overwhelmingly been denied. Like, that has not been, they have been consistent in their denial of vinyl windows. I can think of cases over the last few years where in, where the windows have been considered deteriorated beyond repair, they have been approved. I think that is the elasticity that she may be speaking about. There is some wiggle room as to if the condition of the windows is failing, they can be approved. There's also, the character of certain homes is much stronger than the character of other homes. There's also cases of homes in the neighborhood that have had, again, prior to 2005, the installation of aluminum siding, a number of other features. And so if you were to think of it as a static thing, the review of those buildings as they were, we would be administratively approving or approving the replacement of that aluminum siding with aluminum siding.
Thank you. With that, I'll move to Councilwoman Niskoski.
I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wax.
Are the windows currently in HPC's possession?
Yes, four sashes.
And who made the determination that they're restorable?
I did.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of what the cost to restore them?
I will be the first to admit, having window restoration contractors is an issue that we're wrestling with in our community, and that's nationwide. Anywhere ballpark between $500 to $1,000, depending on the condition of the window and how extensive of a restoration is needed. Alternatively, a homeowner could do it themselves if a homeowner occupied.
And are there contractors available now that can do it?
Yes.
Councilman Lee.
That was the question I was going to ask about the windows. Yeah, um, that was the question I was gonna ask about the windows and where are they now and, and what it would cost to restore them? And, um, so is the recommendation that the owner restore these windows and take the other ones out?
I would always advocate for the restoration of original windows, yes.
And the purpose of, of keeping, uh, the historic preservation of, of a property is to keep the area in, in the same era as what, what it had been.
The integrity of the neighborhood, yes.
And, and these, these new windows have, would, would change that integrity?
I would say that the commission's standards and guidelines, which is what they review the project on, would require them to retain the original windows.
Councilman Davis?
Sure. And I'm glad you said that because this is feeds into the questions I have. So I heard when they can be repaired, when they can be repaired. And I also, Councilman Hammond brought up the, uh, the elasticity of the, of the law of, I guess, the policy. That sounds like that it's like an arbitrary, capricious type thing that we're talking about. So I think we need to get back to what's written versus what we may wanna perceive. But if it's perceived or written that we have, we can sway on our opinions on what is, was qual, was, was, what could be qualified as right or wrong, then we may be in trouble here. So I guess my question is, is that I heard when they can be repaired and also, what was the other term I just used?
Deteriorated beyond repair?
Yeah, that, 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 that term.
Elasticity.
Yeah, that's it. Elastic. That was it. And so we are, uh, talking about, you know, what somebody would interpret as would be good enough, I guess, to replace the, the originality of the windows. I guess, who makes the decision?
We are there to advise them, but ultimately the commission is who reviews the project and recommends either for approval or denial.
So when Jama was doing the windows and, and was there an issue with workers?
I don't know. The project was already completed to the state that you see in the photos when we were, we've discovered it, but we saw the sashes in the trash can. And I'm saying from my experience with serving the commission for the last four years, those windows are restorable. Now, you can question my validity or my ability to make that judgment, and I see that as a valid concern, but I'm the Historic Preservation Administrator.
Sure. No, I, 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 I respect everybody's line here. I do. I just know that when we get into a discussion about which is allowed or what isn't allowable, then that, that's based upon someone's opinion. If we went back to a policy that said it had to have these things, then we can just all grade each other off of that. That's why I asked that question.
How much time do we have left, parliamentarian?
Five minutes and 20 seconds.
I'm done.
Thank you. Any other counsel with additional questions or comments? Councilman Wax?
Thank you. Does the commission take into, um, consideration the state of residency of the homeowner? Does it take, does it take into consideration whether or not they own multiple properties, whether they're a landlord? If I may ask Attorney Kennedy, why she brought it up?
Why I brought it up? I brought it up because I thought you should know about this company. It's not an individual who owns this house. It's not an individual making these repairs. It's not an individual who went out to try to see how much it would cost to restore the windows before he went and installed vinyl windows. Instead, this is a person who's just trying to skirt the law.
Did the commission, as far as you know, consider whether or not he was local or foreign?
No, that, all of this, no. Councilmember Wax, all of this information I found out after. We don't dig into who comes before the commission beforehand.
Okay. Thank you.
This was my curiosity.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, so when he asked about the addresses, do we know what? And he's talking about the constitutionality of residency. When, how did that? What would prompt him to ask that question of the commission? Not that I'm saying you have to know what his mindset is, but would, there is something that-
In the video, he said, "I can see where this is, this is going. I can see which way you're going to vote." And so then he asked those questions. So he-
After?
Yes, after he thought that they were going to vote against him. That's when he started asking those questions.
Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. There was also a statement made that others have installed vinyl windows and those windows are still in place today. So is it the intent of the Historic Preservation Commission to now go to these residents and force them to remove windows that have been installed for years? What, I'm very confused by this.
I'm gonna speak briefly, just the, the, what I call the enforcement arm, the ability for me to approach a property owner who has been denied of a previous COA prior to me even coming to the Historic Preservation Commission in 2017 and get them to remove those windows. We would have to have the legal backing to, in a way, prosecute them to do that. I, I, if I'm being honest, the reality of that is probably not strong.
But the other issue is there are windows that were put in before we were a historic district, and we have no right to demand that those be removed. And the other thing is that if our guidelines were so detailed that, you know, you, you never, um, there was never a question. They were just enormously encyclopedic. We would only need an administrator and no commission. Because the truth is that in the real world, there are all kinds of situations and all kinds of reasons to adjudicate things individually. And so therefore, there is a commission and there are guidelines. And we are trained to interpret the guidelines and also to uphold the very specific things that are very clear. But if we, there wouldn't be a need for a commission if there wasn't, um, a need to discuss individual situations and then, uh, behave fairly towards them. Because keep in mind too that if we, um, if our standards and guidelines say that we want to retain original materials whenever they're in good enough shape to be conserved, which is pretty much the worldwide standard for historic preservation. And then we went around individually saying that this person or that person should be able to do this or that thing because they should for whatever reason. That would be capricious. And then we would never be able to stand by any kind of standard because we would just constantly be willy nilly, you know, agreeing to things. So it's really a very delicate process in which we are hearing all the evidence, assessing the photographs, and the stories of the homeowners and the whole context of the situation in order to make, um, a ruling on a very small number of projects because most projects are individually approved in the office. It's only ones that have any question marks that have to come before the commission. And those question marks are brought into view during the discussion.
Thank you. Final opportunity, counsel? How much time do we have left?
Two seconds.
Thank you.
Please forgive my glee.
No. Thank you. At this time, I will turn it over to Attorney Palmer for our voting options for consideration.
Yes, now it's time for council members to discuss and comment upon the evidence and the arguments made. And at the conclusion of those comments, someone should make a motion either to affirm the HPC or to reverse the HPC. And, uh, depending on a second in the vote, that, that will be the decision of the council.
We only get two options?
Yes.
We can't delay this?
No.
Counsel, are there any further discussion? If not, may entertain a motion, um, for either affirmation of the HPC or opposition.
By us being the HPC that will allow the home carry on with the he has placed?
Motion to reverse would be in favor of the homeowner.
Favor of the homeowner. Does that give him any more latitude for, if he feels like the house should be modeled or repaired?
No, that only affects the two windows that, uh, correct.
I would like to make a motion to uphold the HPC ruling.
Second.
There's a motion and second, uh, on the floor to affirm the HPC's filing. At this time, we will need to take the roll. Clerk Jones?
Uh, Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
I'm not comfortable with this at all. Yes.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Come back.
You can if you want.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
It's three. Aye.
No, she didn't go. I was coming back to her.
Oh, you're coming back to her?
I told you, aye.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with aye.
Aye.
You have eight ayes.
So the decision of the, uh, HPC is affirmed and notice will be sent out by the clerk's office?
Thank you. The motion carries. At this time, is there any other unfinished business from the council?
I do have just one statement. I know it's late, I apologize. Based on the written objectives with the Community Relations Committee stating that the South Bend School Board Superintendent will come before this body, um, two times each year, I just wanted to give, um, an update. I have contacted Dr. Cummings multiple times this calendar year. First, um, I was asked to wait until after the joint council and the board meeting took place. And that evening, he told me he would get in touch with me, but did not. Secondly, he asked that I wait until the, um, South Bend Community School Board passed the joint resolution. And then the evening that this council passed the resolution as well. Again, I was told that he would get in touch with me to set a date to come before the council. Finally, I contacted him last week and he is unable to attend the remaining meetings that we have this year. So that is my update for the council regarding the superintendent of schools.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business?
You know that, um, policy was written back in 2009 to encourage the conversation between the South Bend School Corporation and South Bend City Government. It was also intended for, um, it to be, um, a shared agenda, a shared idea. I'm not sure where all this other stuff came from, with these new committees and these whole ideas of how South Bend government is going to participate with South Bend schools. Uh, although I encouraged the conversation, uh, although I was the author of the policy, I'm just hoping, uh, as we move forward, that both sides can come to collectively agree that there needs to be discussion, whether we go in front of the school corporation two times a year or they come in front of us two times a year or we just share a time, uh, one on each end. But I, I, um, I understand the frustration. Uh, I think it's almost insane that we can go through an entire process of adopting and putting together, um, all of these great committees to have people serve on, when in fact, the leader of a said organization is against meeting. It doesn't hold any weight, though. It doesn't hold any water. So I understand the frustration. Uh, I think that, um, by us being a team of nine, that it will make even better sense for, um, someone else on this council to reach out and say, "Hey, I thought we were playing ball together," uh, as, as an effort of, of teammates working together, as an organization working together. Because if it's just one lone person doing or saying one thing or, or trying to move forward, uh, on the initiative, and everybody else is just watching, nothing happens. And all the movement prior to, from 2009 all the way to current day doesn't mean a thing. So I think we need to work at this together, council members, just not one lone person regardless of whose committee it is in. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Any other counsel with unfinished business? Is there any new business? The only new business that I have, again, to reiterate, is the last council meeting for calendar year 2021 is December 13th. In your packet is the 2022 meeting dates and also available in the clerk's office, and it will be sent out to the media as well. If nothing else, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Oh, my God. Thank you.
You got it, Senator, at 10:30.
What'd you say?